The meeting to order at 6:58. If you want to wait until, you don't want to wait till seven, right?
Seven oh two by my clock.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Two point zero, any public comment? No public comment. Has everybody had a chance to read the meeting minutes from January 18th, February 1st and February 15th?
Yes, I did see them and go through them. They look fine to me.
Any other oral motions, Steve?
No, they actually look pretty good, Maureen. I read them as well.
Okay.
I'm good to go.
Can I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Yes, I would make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from January 18th, February 1st and February 15th. Steven Mattelli and I?
Second to motion, Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. Next four point O, we have guest presentations under four point one, which is 149 Main LIP application. Is Kevin Lobes here? I know Ed Marchand is here.
Yeah, yes, I am, Maureen.
Okay, could you give us an overview?
I will, I will do that. Let me introduce myself. I'm Ed Marchand. I've been Kevin Lobes's advisor on 149 Main from day one. When we submitted the project eligibility letter to Mass Housing, that was January 2018. And when the comprehensive permit itself was issued in August of 2018, I think you're all aware that the project was completed in June of 2020. The reason we've asked for this meeting with the board and we appreciate you scheduling it so quickly is that we would like to request your approval and endorsement of a LIP application. LIP is a DHCD, Mass Department of Housing and Community Development Program. It stands for Local Initiative Program. It's designed to reward towns, cities that take an initiative to create affordable housing. It's known as the Friendly 40B program precisely because you need to work with the selectmen to get endorsement of the proposed project. Now, of course, the project is completed. We're, the team is all proud of it. We think it's come out quite well. I'm sure you're familiar with it. Now Kevin is focusing on trying to create financing that will stabilize financing over the long term. The beauty of the LIP program is that it places no restrictions on who provides the financing. Under our current subsidizing agency, Mass Housing, this project was endorsed as a Mass Housing New England Fund program, which is a fine program. However, it's more restrictive in terms of the options that are available for permanent financing. And it requires that at least 25% of the permanent financing be sourced from a member bank of the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. That's how we did the project to begin with. But it's a hazard, that loan has a short, relatively short maturity term of 10 years, which is fairly standard. There are other financing options available that could give you a fixed interest rate for a maturity term of 35 years. The beauty of that is it eliminates any, the risk of increases in the interest rate. And I would argue that's a benefit certainly for the owner of the property, for the town, because it's also protects that long-term affordability and the financial viability of the project. So what we're asking for, we had a preliminary meeting with the town manager, Derek Brindisi. And we had a draft application, but this is really a very simple modification. In fact, it's considered an insubstantial change in the 40B world. Kevin, Derek's asked, are there going to be any other changes in the project? I confirmed to Derek that there's no change. We're still governed by the comprehensive permit issued by the ZBA and the regulatory agreement, which is executed with Mass Housing. Now, if in fact there is a better financing alternative through the LIP program, and we hope there will be, then there will have to be slight modifications made to the comprehensive permit and the regulatory agreement to reflect that DHCD will be the new subsidizing agency. However, the terms of the comprehensive permit in terms of the units being affordable in perpetuity, in terms of the rents, in terms of the types of units that have been designated and approved by Mass Housing as the affordable units will remain the same. If Derek had asked if I could do a draft vote, I did a draft vote. I believe that's in your records in your homework for tonight's meeting. And in there, I make it clear that this is subject to there being no change in the number and distribution of affordable units for one-bedroom, five-two-bedroom and two-three-bedroom units, which shall permanently remain affordable so long as the project is not in compliance with the town's zoning bylaw and for the longest period allowed by law. And also, there can be no change in terms of all 44 units being eligible for listing on your subsidized housing inventory. So that's really what our purpose is tonight, to answer any questions you might have on 40B and what we're asking for.
So any changes that you want to make has to come back before the Board of Selectmen or the zoning board?
No, it has to, if we want to make any, if we want to change the subsidizing agency, we have to get approval of the ZBA. It's not unusual for there to be project changes to a 40B development. What the ZBA does in that case is it has to make a determination within 20 days as to whether that change is a substantial or insubstantial change. And then the paperwork I submitted to Derek, one of the examples of an insubstantial change is a change in the subsidizing agency as long as no other changes are made to the project. We will fall in that category. So the steps are to get your support. And the support means you need to sign page, I believe it's page two of the application to DHCD. We submit the application to DHCD. DHCD approves it as a LIP project. And I've already had some preliminary discussions with DHCD. I expect that they'll, they will approve it. And then we will go to the ZBA and ask them to modify the comprehensive permit to allow the addition of DHCD under its LIP program as a subsidizing agency. So it will, and I've worked on projects like this before where you have two options. Mass Housing can, can remain as a subsidizing agency or alternatively DHCD could be the subsidizing agency.
Any questions, Steve, Brett?
Yeah, I mean, it would be my recollection that when the project originally came forward, it was really initiated through Mass Housing. So essentially now it's being changed and it will, as you mentioned, the subsidizing agency now will be DCHD.
So, yes.
Okay.
And I.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Needless to say, I've had, I've been doing 40Bs for a long time and I always want to maintain my, what I hope are good relationships with Mass Housing. And I asked Mass Housing if they had any sort of all financing alternatives that might allow us, or Kevin, to lock in a long rate. They didn't. They understand why we are looking into the DHCD LIP program. So we've got their support on that. They, they were excellent to work with, but they do not provide the financing themselves. They have no financing in this. The financing is through a private lender using NEF funds for at least 25% of the project financing.
So does DHCD, do they subsidize the rate? What, what is their role in the subsidizing agency? So what is their actual role in this?
With 40B, the only subsidy is the zoning relief that communities provide. DHCD does not make any direct loan. Mass Housing doesn't, some instances make direct loans. But for this project, there was no loan. And those loans are not particularly, the financing on them is very comparable to what you could get from a private lender. So the subsidy from DHCD's perspective is really to sort of provide technical assistance during, during the process.
Okay. Okay. I did have one other, one other question and then I'll, I'll defer to you Brett. My only other question then. So would anything change in the management of the property? Does your company actually manage all 33 affordables? Only 11 that, I'm sorry, the 11 subsidized in the 33 market rate? Are those done in-house or those, do you have any management?
Third-party property, there's a third-party property manager who manages the, serves as a property manager. In addition, at the initial rent up, we had an expert conduct the lottery. And she is involved on also in terms of sort of ongoing requirements for the affordable units. And I also continue to be involved, not nowhere near as much as I was during the development of the project.
Okay. And, and nothing in that manner of the project, nothing changes going from Mass Housing to DHCD?
No, other than the fact that as the subsidizing agency, DHCD will be the regulatory agency which monitors the project and makes sure we comply with the regulatory agreement.
I see.
Which the regulatory agreement, if someone leaves one of the affordable units, who tracks that to make sure it stays an affordable unit?
We need to certify that and that's where the lottery agent comes in.
Okay.
So it's, you know, that's very strict. In terms of complying with the income limitations, the rental, the rent limitations, that's spelled out very clearly. So the property manager and the lottery agent are involved with the releasing of units that become vacant. Very, I mean, the, the property, I think currently is at 100% occupancy. There's, there's very little turnover in those affordable units. But there is a process to make sure that they're rented in accordance with the eligibility guidelines.
As an affordable unit.
As an affordable unit.
Okay.
Now, remember, with, with, with rental housing is a little bit different for for sale housing. With rental housing, you propose the units that are to be the affordable units. And as part of the final approval of the project, the subsidizing agency approves those. If for some reason the resident of an affordable unit in unit 101, income goes beyond the eligibility limits, that resident has two choices. They can pay the market, and it's 140% beyond what the limit was. They can pay the new market rent or they can choose to leave. If they choose to pay the market rent, then the owner of the development is obligated to take the next available like unit. If it's a two-bedroom unit, the next available two-bedroom unit. So there could be a change in the actual unit, but you still have to, you know, a two-bedroom has to be released as a new two-bedroom.
As a new two-bedroom affordable, correct?
Yes, as a two-bedroom affordable. We can't change that. Otherwise, we're in violation of zoning.
Yeah.
Because that's a condition of the comprehensive permit and the town zoning enforcement officer would, would enforce that also.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm absolutely fine with this application. I did some additional background today on the LIP program versus the traditional 40B. I mean, at the end of the day, this change has zero impact on the town, the development, the housing inventory, the number of, number of affordable units and, and any other aspect of the project that would have an impact on the town, the residents, the tax rate, the residents that live in that development. So I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable making this, this motion. And, and don't have any additional questions.
Are we ready to make a motion? You have a copy of that vote, Brett?
I sure do. I would like to make a motion that in order for 149 Main Street to secure long-term financing for the 149 development, while having either Mass Housing or DHCD serve as the subsidizing agency, I make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the local initiative program application on page two of the application and endorses the submission of the application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development. The vote is conditional based on there being no change in the number and distribution of affordable units for one-bedroom units, five-two-bedroom units and two-three-bedroom units as required in the comprehensive permit granted by the zoning board of appeals on August 20th, 2018. The project shall include 11 affordable units available to low and moderate income households whose annuals income may not exceed 80% of the area median income adjusted for household size as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, called affordable units, which shall permanently remain affordable as long as the project is not in compliance with the town zoning bylaw and for the longest period allowed by law. So the affordable unit shall continue to serve the public purposes for which this comprehensive permit was authorized under General Law Chapter 40B subsections 20 to 23. Additionally, this vote is conditional upon all 44 units at the 149 Main Rental Development remaining eligible for listing on the town subsidized housing inventory. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion. Steven Mattelli and I?
Unanimous action by the board. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good evening, Ed and Kevin. Good evening, both of you. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
You as well.
Okay, 5.1 is a one-day liquor license. The event manager is Rashford and Sons Brew House. Is anybody from Rashford here?
Sure are, sure am. Brian Goodman, Rashford and Sons here.
And this is going to be at the Kiwanis Beach Summer Concert Series?
Yep, I'm hoping this is going to be super easy because we were in, after last year and the success we had last year, the Parks and Rec Department invited us back. So we are planning on doing exactly what we did last year, no changes that, by all the metrics that we're aware of, was very successful and well received.
And this is just one time or is it through the summer season?
Summer season. I, oh gosh, shame on me. I don't know how many, I submitted to Sandy a stack of permits based on the dates that were provided, provided to me by the Parks and Rec Department. I want to say it's six or seven dates. But it's specifically the date that Parks and Rec invited us back.
Any questions?
I had jotted it down. It looks like it is six separate dates. You do have the hours for which the concerts will be playing. Yeah, I guess the only question I had really was, and I never got a chance to send an email off to anybody from the RecCom to make sure that, you know, they endorse the project. I would assume that it, it should be fine. I'd probably be a little bit apprehensive as far as authorizing six dates this early in the season. But I'll defer to my colleagues. If it's good with you, you too, it's fine with me.
It's good with me.
Yeah, fine with me.
Take a motion to approve?
And I guess one other thing while we're on the topic, each date, it's, a one-day liquor license is $50. Should we want to allow for some flexibility or is Mr. Goodman going to pay for these dates all at once? Or what do we want to do if there's a rain date?
How's that? I think each one has to be paid for. I think that's A, B, C, C, isn't it?
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, listen, for six, for 300 bucks, I'll pay you guys whenever you send me the bill or whenever you want me to pay you. Again, the way we see it is this is, this isn't a revenue stream for us. This is goodwill marketing that we don't, that nets us a few bucks. So like, we're happy to just pay the 50 bucks a day. That's fine. Let's not, let's not dwell on that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm all set. This is always great activities, great events. I think it went well last year. People really, you know, appreciate it and I think it's a nice addition to the event to be able to have a local vendor there. So I, I'm supportive and I, I don't have the six states. I didn't go through the full 24-page of applications. Steve, do you have the dates there?
I do, I do have them actually. I jotted them down. Had a few minutes before the meeting and you do such a good job with these motions, Brett. I stuck you with the long motion, so I'll take these easy short ones, so.
Still catching my breath.
If I could jump in real quick, Debbie Morelli from the Recreation Commission has raised her hand.
I do see that. I was wondering, I guess I was wondering, how do we address that?
Hi. Well, I just put it in the chat. So I just wanted to let everyone know that RecCom has approved this activity and there should be six concerts unless there's a rain, rain out.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Deb.
I, I do have the dates. If I make a mistake on one of these dates, we could correct it later, but I took them right off the application. So if you're ready, I'll make a motion.
Ready?
We're ready.
I would motion that we approve the applications for the one-day liquor licenses down at Kiwanis Beach for the Summer Concert Series for the following dates, June 29th, July 6th, July 13th, July 20th, July 27th and August 3rd. Steven Mattelli and I?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everyone. Have a lovely evening. Appreciate your help as always and take care.
Yes, you as well. Good luck with the endeavor. Hopefully.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you. We'll meet it, but not as much as last year. Take care, everyone. Goodbye.
Next on the agenda, we have a street sign request by Crystal Maloney from Townline Dairy Farm. Is anybody from Townline available? This is what, just a farm sign, Derek? For animal crossings or tractor crossings or anything like that?
Right.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Steve?
It's, it's really pretty straightforward. I, in my mind, I always envision these particular signs when tractors are crossing the road or going from one field to the other field up along a traveled road. So I'm not sure that this will help a lot as far as slowing down the traffic, but I, I don't have any trouble, you know, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with the installation of the sign. I'm assuming that Dennis will find an adequate spot to install it.
Okay, Brett?
Nope, I, I, I looked at it and I, yeah, I agree with Steve. I presume that as long as Dennis puts up the right sign, I assume it's just the, the tractor farm equipment sign at the entrance to, to the farm there. So I think it's, I, I support it. No questions, no issues.
Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Sure. I can make the motion to approve the street sign request as submitted by Crystal Maloney for Down Townline Dairy Farm for the installation of a tractor and farm sign at the farm road entrance at 64 Williams Street, Upton, Mass. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion. Steven Mattelli and I?
Unanimous action by the board. 5.3 Tri Valley Front Runners Road Race. Does anybody have any, or is anybody here for that? Matthew Kellogg or?
Yes, thanks for having me. I'm the local race director for a running club in the area called the Tri Valley Front Runners. We're a group of about 350 runners in the Menden, Upton, Northbridge, Hope Dale, Milford area. We have been hosting a local race in its 41st running based out of the Nittany High School facility. It's about a 10-mile race that loops all the way down to Menden Road in Northbridge. I work with Chief Bradley of the Upton PD and Lieutenant Labrie of Northbridge PD for traffic control each year. And I, I've been doing that for the last five or six years. A portion of the proceeds of our race go to local high school cross-country and track athletes from the local high schools. And then we make a donation to the Jimmy Fund on behalf of the Upton PD. And then transitioning from a previous agenda item, we also this year are working with Rashford Brewing on like a big pickup a couple of days beforehand and then some post-race activities. So our request is just to continue our tradition of, of running this race and working with the local officials to make that possible.
Thank you. Brett, Steve?
Yeah, great event.
I'll entertain a motion.
I was actually just going to ask you, did you, I believe we, did you have this race last year? And is it, was it well attended considering COVID?
Yeah, it's been, it's been a little bit tricky. The 2020 running was delayed. It's annually a spring race. It was delayed to October, which was up against a lot of other races that were delayed from the spring. And we still had a really good showing of 400-ish folks. We were previously part of a New England Grand Prix series that USATF, United States Track and Field Association sponsors. Unfortunately, we are not part of that series this year, so I, I do expect numbers to be down. But our goal is to return it to its roots of kind of a local race that has a, maybe a smaller number of participants, but focuses has a, maybe a smaller number of participants, but focuses a little bit more on the community and it's priced at more of a a, a spot where people can just kind of come out and, um, have, have fun, so. Um, yeah, we did run it in 2020, but, uh, yeah, we have kind of like a five to six month turnaround here to get it back to the spring series. It's always been, uh, it's called the BTU. It's called the Boston Tune-Up. So it was originally meant to be a kind of a last tune-up race for Boston Marathon qualifiers. Um, and, and we're kind of returning it to its, its tradition there.
Okay. I can, uh, motion it if you, you folks are ready?
Yeah.
I would make a motion that we approve the road race application put forward by Tri Valley Front Runners for Saturday, April 2nd, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, uh, as set forth in the application, the course in Upton. Uh, Steven Mattelli, aye?
Brett Simas, aye.
I think you muted Maureen.
Sorry. Unanimous action by the board.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck with the event.
Yeah, good luck.
5.4 Motion to Execute Blackstone Partnership for Public Health IMA Board of Health. Um, anyone here to speak to that? Derek?
Yeah, Diane Chen is here from the Board of Health.
Is she there? Okay.
I'm here. Yes.
Okay, Diane. Can you give us an overview of that?
Sure. So this is an IMA. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, this is an IMA between eight towns, um, Blackstone Valley partnership for a public health nurse and an epidemiologist. And, uh, what this, this is all with grant money from the state, from the MDPH. Um, and what this agreement is for, as I said, a public health therapist and epidemiologist, and it's gonna help with contact tracing, um, doing studies, um, home visits, uh, you know, anything that the nurse needs help with. So, um, you know, they can work on communicable diseases, infectious diseases. They can help with clinics. Uh, they'll do some surveillance for us, some, some studies and data analysis. And this came about when COVID was at its worst and the state made some money available, which we all grabbed onto. Things have quieted down quite a bit, but, um, we're still going to try to utilize both of these positions between the eight towns. Um, what we really want to do is put together some studies to find out what age group was affected the worst and, um, you know, just do like a geography kind of thing where, you know, we'll find out where the sources were the worst. So there's a lot we can have. There's actually two positions these nurses do. So in order to execute this, though, it does have to be approved by the select.
Yeah, if I could just add to that, to the chair, this, this, um, agreement that Diane just outlined, um, the board had, uh, agreed upon a, a few months back. I believe this is a $350,000 regional grant that was awarded to the town of Northbridge, as Diane indicated, uh, uh, partners with seven other communities. So this, what's before you is just an amendment to the original agreement that was agreed upon, um, a, a few months back. But as Diane also pointed out, that IMAs can only be signed on the select board, so this is why it's in front of you this evening.
Questions?
Uh, and as far as it reads, then the funding for this position of these additional hours uh, are funded by the grant itself. This will have no effect on the BOH budget.
Absolutely none. So it, it's all, the town of Northbridge is the parent company for this, as, as Derek said, and I neglected to tell you. Um, Northbridge is running all of this and through its town manager, and it's overseen by the whole town of Northbridge, um, staffing. But yes, all, all the funding is coming from the state. It will affect us zero financially.
Thank you, Diane.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you. I have no other question.
Brett?
Not here. I'm good. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I am happy to make a motion to approve the, uh, intermunicipal agreement for local public health services as part of the Blackstone Valley Partnership for Public Health. Amendment one. Brett Simas, aye.
Uh, second to motion, Steven Mattelli, aye?
Unanimous action by the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
5.5 Motion to Adopt Equal Employment Opportunity and Anti-Discrimination Harassment, Including Sexual Harassment Policy. Is this put forward by Personnel, Derek?
Um, so I'll refer to Sandy, our Human Resources Director, to outline, uh, why this isn't funny this evening. Uh, but what she will tell you is that, um, this is, um, already gone to the Personnel Board and under the town's personnel bylaw, uh, any changes to the personnel rules and regulations, uh, require a Personnel Board approval, and then finally a Board of Selectment approval before we can, uh, implement those changes. But I'll defer to Sandy to talk about the changes that are before you this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, as you may know, um, every city and town in Massachusetts is required by, um, MFS General Law to adopt a sexual harassment policy and to distribute that policy annually to existing employees and to all new employees. In recent years, however, the trend has been to move forward adopting a unified policy addressing sexual harassment and harassment and discrimination with respect to the broader range of protected categories covered by state and federal anti-discrimination laws. So to this end, um, I had proposed to the Personnel Board and now to the Board of Selectment, um, to adopt a policy that's in your, um, linked into the agenda, um, tonight. Um, if we adopt this policy, broader policy, uh, we do not need to adopt a separate sexual harassment policy. Um, once this is adopted, we will distribute this to all employees as we do annually. And, um, the, the policy, um, was taken from KP. Um, I should also mention that, um, this will replace the 2011 harassment policy and the 2018 equal employment affirmative action policy. So basically, it's just combining it all into a, a cleaner version.
Thank you, Sandy. Um, Brett or Steve, any questions?
Sandy, if you could just forward to us those previous policies, um, this one's very, very comprehensive. Uh, it seems like all the i's are dotted, all the k's are crossed, but, um, when we make a, an adjustment, I always kind of like to take a look at what we're what we're superseding. So I think it'd be interesting to see what, uh, what policies we're losing and what are being, uh, you know, therefore joined into this one single policy. So if you could forward that to us, uh, but otherwise, um, if, if Brett, Maureen, if you're both okay with it, I'm fine with it as well.
It's cer- it certainly, um, you know, obviously it's a, it's a very important piece of, uh, policy to have put together. My only question was gonna be around the legal review to make sure that, um, everything in there was, was, you know, covered, accurate, appropriate, and, and sort of, um, set up the right degree of protections. And as long as, you know, KP has done that, and it sounds like you got the, the, the policy wording and language um, through them or with them, uh, and as long as that's the case, then I, I'm, I'm absolutely fine with putting this in. So thanks, Sandy, for doing all the work.
So we can entertain a motion to adopt it?
Okay. I would make a motion that we adopt the equal employment opportunity and anti-discrimination and harassment, including sexual harassment policy, as described in the agendas this evening. Steven Mattelli, aye?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action by the board.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Sandy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
5.6 Motion to Execute Maplewood Cemetery Deed.
Okay, so, um, as you know, a town meeting approved the, um, acquisition of the Maplewood Cemetery. Uh, it's taken us, uh, the better part of four months to get us to where we are tonight. The Maplewood Association has how, uh, has, has in fact, uh, signed the deed. So what's before you is the deed to, uh, is the acceptance to the deed. Uh, once the board approves that and then signs that, so we'll have copies available for you at Town Hall to sign. Uh, we will then go ahead, send this off to KP, so they can have it recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Once the recording takes place, um, the cemetery will be under our care and custody.
Any questions? I mean, we've had various discussions on this.
No question, no questions here.
I'd entertain a motion to execute the deed.
Uh, I make a motion that we execute the Maplewood Cemetery deed. Brett Simas, aye.
Second to motion, Steven Mattelli, aye?
Unanimous action by the board. 5.7.1 Technology.
I apologize.
Sandy has a finger up.
I, I'm sorry. The, the deed is on the conference room table, so at your leisure, you can sign that.
Okay.
It'll need three signatures. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a timeline when that needs to be done by Friday or something like that?
Uh, no timeline, but the, the sooner we have it recorded, the, it'll then be officially the town's responsibility.
And we can get it plowed.
We can start, we can start raking. I have a work party over there, Brett. 20 acres of raking.
You and me both. I'll bring my snow blower. You bring your rake.
Uh, next on the agenda, Technology Committee Member. Um, we have David P. Lane that has put on a request to be appointed to the Technology Committee, which is a one-year term.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yes. Good evening. My name is David Lane. Uh, I've been a resident of Upton for now, just under two years. Uh, in the recent town, uh, census, there was a note from the Technology Committee, which I dropped a responding note into, uh, offering my services to the town. I've been in IT networking at senior levels for 30 years now and thought I had experience that I could offer to, to the town. I've spoken we, with, uh, Steve Rakitin, uh, about this position and suggested that I, uh, put this application in.
And we have a one-year position. Is there, is that the only position that's open, uh, on the Technology Committee?
I can't remember if there's more than one seat open or if that is just one seat.
Maureen, hi, this is Steve Rakitin. Um, when, when the, when the board, um, appointed the committee originally, I believe you appointed it with seven members. And if you appoint Dave tonight, he will be the sixth member, so there would be still one more, um, position open.
And this is a one-year term?
I, yeah, all, all of the members on the committee, um, have a one-year term.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, no, I guess only other question, uh, David, is this your first, uh, board that you've, uh, actually applied for? Or have you been on any other boards?
Uh, I have not been on any other boards. I have done a project in a town setting. I designed the wireless network for the Lincoln Sudbury High School system.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm very grateful, uh, David. It's great. I look forward to working together. It's always nice to, uh, have folks, uh, step up and, and help out in the community. So this is great. It's, uh, nice to meet you virtually here and I hope to see you around town. Thank you.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
I'm pleased to meet you also, and thank you for stepping forward. Can we have a motion to appoint David?
Uh, yes, I would make a motion that we appoint David P. Lane to the Technology, uh, Technology Committee for a one-year term. Steven Mattelli, aye?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. Thank you, David.
Okay, thank you all. Have a good night.
You too.
You as well. Although I wonder, when we make that appointment, is it the remainder of this term or is it a full one-year term? I guess that's a techno, a technical question I may not have the answer to. The, go ahead, Sandy.
It's to the remainder of this term. So all the reappointments will be again in June.
Okay, so I guess I'll just need to make that amendment to my motion for the remainder of that term. This term. Steven Mattelli, aye?
Brett Simas, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. 5.7.2 Town Manager Search Committee Member. Um, can we, I, I'd like to set a process for this.
Um, Maureen, before we go there, did we miss the Affordable Housing Appointment?
Um, I don't see it on the agenda.
It's 5.72.
5.72.
5.72? No, I have that as the street sign request.
I did see it on my version.
Did you?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I pulled mine off the website just a little bit ago.
So that would, okay, so that's gonna be, it's an appointment to the Housing Authority?
If, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, the Affordable Housing Trust, okay.
Yeah, Tracy Higgins for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Is Tracy with us at this meeting by any chance?
She is. I am, and, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm, I'm not gonna put my video on because I'm sitting in the dark with a sick chicken behind me. I'm trying not to disturb.
A girl after my own heart.
Exactly. He's in. Um, so I submitted an application, um, basically because I felt like it was, I haven't been on any of the boards and I felt like I should step up if I care about affordable housing, if I care about, uh, environmentally sensitive areas in town, if I care about equity and education, I ought to step up and see what I can do to help, so. So here I am.
So is this, this is your first time on a committee, right?
Yeah, yeah, on, on one of the town committees, yeah.
On one of the town committees.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's the term? Is this a one-year term, Derek or Sandy?
This term would be until June 30th of 2022.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have no questions.
Can we have a motion?
I would make a motion to, uh, approve in the application for, uh, from Tracy Higgins for the Affordable Housing Trust for the remainder of the current term, which runs through June 30th, 2022. Brett Simas, aye.
Second to motion, Steven Mattelli, aye?
Unanimous action by the board.
Tracy. Yeah.
Thank you.
Those chickens, or that one chicken anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tracy.
Uh, now we have 5.7.2 Town Manager Search Committee Member, Members, I should say. And I'd like to set a process to go by. Um, first, I, I would ask the board if we could make the appointment of, um, Scott Van Ralton, seeing he's the only one that put in from the Personnel Committee. And that was one of the requirements of being on the committee was the Personnel.
Yeah.
I, uh, I would remind you actually, Marsha Kazlowski also applied. She applied as either a Citizen at Large or a member of the Personnel Board.
I think, I think it was Citizen at Large.
Yeah, Marsha, she is a Personnel Board member, but her application, as I understand it, was for a Citizen at Large, uh, position. Uh, she, she did write in an email to the Personnel Board that she supported Scott Van Ralton. She did write in an email to the Personnel Board that she supported Scott Van Ralton's candidacy, and that she would pursue a citizen-at-large seat.
Looks like someone has their hand up to comment.
Who is it?
Marsha.
Marsha, okay. Did you want to speak, Marsha?
Maybe she's on mute? I'm not sure.
I don't know.
She's muted. She wasn't, and then now she is.
Okay.
But I mean, from my perspective, what Derek just shared covers what I think our question would have been was whether or not she was interested in being considered alongside Scott, or if it was the Personnel Board's position that Scott would be the representative, and that Marsha would be applying as an at-large applicant.
Right.
Looks like maybe there's something in the chat. Is that possible? No. Marsha can't unmute, so.
Oh.
I'm gonna guess that her email to Derek was reflective of her position.
I would have to go along with that.
So with that, I would make a motion that we appoint Scott Van Ralton to the Town Manager Search Committee. Brett Simus, aye.
Second, Stephen Mattelli, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. And now we have quite a few.
And sorry, sorry, Maureen, I apologize for interrupting, just to be clear. Marsha did just type in that she is applying as a citizen, and that she supports Scott. So just to make sure that folks know that we were honoring what Marsha's requested, so.
Thank you. Could we, then, we have four members left to appoint. If maybe Steve, you nominate four members that you would like to see on the committee? And then perhaps Brett, you'd be second, and nominate your four? And then I will do my four at the end, and then we'll go from there?
Okay, I think that makes sense. So we'll each sort of basically nominate our top four, and then have a discussion about it. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. Steve?
All right. My four nominees would be Marsha Kazlowski, Laura Hem, Jim Bergstrom, and Robert Fleming.
Okay.
Hold on one sec. So just a couple of things. I feel, I feel sort of compelled to share my approach, perspective, philosophy on these appointments. Just before I share my four nominees, when I look at this for folks on the phone and generally out in the public, I think we had, was it seventeen applications, Derek, once we had the final?
Yeah, seventeen applications.
Yeah, I saw sixteen myself, is what I saw.
So that was, you know, very encouraging to see that degree of interest and enthusiasm, and folks frankly stepping up to participate in such an important search committee. I think it's, you know, a testament to, A, the importance of the role, the importance that the town manager role plays in the town, and also the importance that the Town Manager Search Committee is gonna play in that process of identifying who the next town manager will be. So that was great to see. When I think about setting up the Search Committee, a few of the things and considerations that I look at obviously are, we want to have, you know, a breadth of experience, and also a breadth of representation of various folks from within the community. And we also want to create as much, you know, equity as we can in terms of both representatives, people that have experience, more experience, less experience, different experience, and some folks that are newer and can also be objective. So obviously, I would be nominating folks, and I'll walk through this, that have, you know, a lot of experience with town government. So my first nominee would be David Ross, who is a former selectman in Grafton, and he is Chair of the EDC here in Upton, and has been working in local government for quite some time, and certainly has a lot of experience, both in Upton and in other towns with local government, and knows what a town manager, how a town manager needs to fit within the community. So I would nominate Dave Ross. I would also, in that vein, agree with Steve, I would nominate Bob Fleming as well. He's a, you know, thirty-plus-year local selectman, was part of the hiring of the first town manager in Upton. Clearly has a lot of background, and has that Upton expertise and that sort of legacy view. So I think that that would be my second nominee. Third would be Megan Ronzio. She currently serves on the Cultural Council, and is someone who is, you know, from my perspective, you know, a newer volunteer in town. She's stepped up in this regard to take on more responsibility as part of the Search Committee. She has extensive experience hiring and recruiting for very large, complex governmental organizations. So she does a lot of work with DESI, et cetera. So that type of experience and perspective, I think, would be very valuable. And my final nominee would be Christina Zedanis. She is, again, a newer volunteer that when I saw her application, I was, you know, very impressed. She has an HR background. And I think that that would be a nice roundout to the committee, to have, you know, the town manager consultant, Personnel Board representative, some people that are, you know, local town government veterans, like Bob Fleming, a town government expert from multiple towns that understands the town manager role, and Dave Ross. And then both Christina and Megan having outside industry expertise, and can bring in sort of an objective outsider view, but a very professionalized view of how to assess talent and within a particular role. So those would be my four.
Okay.
And Maureen, if you could just afford me just one minute?
Yep.
I didn't get a chance to actually get into my philosophy. That was well said, Brett. And I think all of us, although we're not gonna probably get into quite that much detail, I think all of us are using that same basic set of parameters. You know, my own feeling is, again, I mentioned this probably at a previous meeting. I served on the very first Town Manager Search Committee, and a question was raised about in-person meetings. And, you know, the process, although we can put different spins on the process, the process ends up really boiling down to the same set. The ranking of candidates, the going through resumes and cover letters and job expertise, you know, investigating the educational background of candidates, all of that is gonna be carried over from search to search to search. And of course, the last time we searched for a town manager was my first term as a selectman. So I've been fortunate enough to, at some capacity, work with all three of our town managers that we've had in town. Of course, the interim, Bob Reed, our very first, Blythe Robinson, and of course, Derek. So I've taken my choices work, two people there that I chose that had governmental or town government experience, and then I have a person that I felt was a human resources, you know, really strong suit in human resources, and then chose someone who, as you mentioned, Brett, you wanna, we do, I think we want to make sure that we include somebody who has not served on a committee, is gonna come into this objectively. And, you know, unfortunately, with sixteen applicants, or perhaps there were seventeen, I saw sixteen on my my notes. You know, unfortunately, there's going to be eleven or twelve people that are disappointed. So, you know, hopefully it won't deter them in the future from stepping forward, but but anyways, that's my philosophy on how I arrived at my picks.
Awesome. I bet Maureen is making a very compelling.
Maureen, you are muted, so whatever you're telling us, we can't hear you.
I didn't even hit it.
It was the cat.
It was.
As long as you didn't mute my speech.
Yes.
Did you have the same line?
He was out getting a coffee. That started during my long speech.
I guess, I guess, right, neither one of us was very riveting there, Brett. She was very content to just walk away from the screen.
Well, my first pick would be Bob Fleming, because of his experience and his wealth and knowledge of town government. And he actually was the sponsor and author of the Town Manager Act, so he has a lot of insight. My second pick would be Dave Ross. He has a future in his mind for the town that we've worked very hard on, on the EDC, which encompassed a lot of people that got involved and get, come up with a vision. My third pick would be Christina Zandis, Zanandis. And she has a lot of experience in human resources, and she is interested in the growth of Upton in a positive way. My fourth one would be Donna DeShaden, who has been on many committees and been involved in town government for many years, and has a support for growth within a small-town vision. And that's basically where I think we are coming from. So those are my four picks.
If I could just, I could just jump in here, just to give you guys a summary of where you're at with your votes. Mr. Fleming has three votes, so he has a unanimous support of the board. Mr. Dave Ross has two votes. And then Mrs. Zedanis has two votes as well. And then there are one, two, three, four, five others with one vote. So I guess if you were following this... Well, I guess, I guess you'd have to determine what you want to do next, but clearly, Mr. Fleming has the support of all three of you.
Yeah, so I would, I would make a motion to appoint Bob Fleming to the Town Manager Search Committee. Brett Simus, aye.
Maureen, Steve?
Second, Steve Mattelli, aye.
Unanimous action by the board.
I just figured it'll make it easier to just check these off the list one by one. So, all right.
Have we got, and Dave Ross has two votes. Could I get a motion to appoint Dave Ross?
I would make a motion to appoint Dave Ross to the Town Manager Search Committee. Brett Simus, aye.
I am a no on that one. I feel it's really more or less the same skill set as Mr. Fleming, so I don't see how that really adds to the committee. Maybe the, other than the purview of EDC. So, you know, again, I don't, I see that as a kind of a repetition of a skill set, so I'm a no on that.
I would second the motion, and I, majority vote, Dave Ross. Christina Zedanis, how do you say that?
Zedanis.
Zedanis. Has two votes also. Do we have a motion for her?
I make a motion to appoint Christina Zedanis to the Town Manager Search Committee. Brett Simus, aye.
I'll second that. Stephen Mattelli, aye.
Unanimous action by the board.
I did have her probably on number six or seven on my list.
Great.
Again, strong HR background.
Yeah. All right, so what is that? That leaves us one.
We have
one.
Marsha Kowalski, Laura Hem, Jim Bergstrom, and Donna DeShaden.
And Megan Ronzio.
Oh, Megan, yes, okay.
I'll have one vote.
Do we want to just ask them to share with that? Because I'm familiar with some more or less, obviously based on the paper. But I don't know, whatever, whatever you think, Maureen or Steve. I'm not sure how we want to start noodling through these.
I would give each one an opportunity to speak. Can we start with Marsha Kowalski? Is she having a problem with her speaker?
I see, you know, I see a lot of initials on the bottom of the screen, but I don't see the names of the people, so I can't tell who's on and who's off.
So Marsha's here. Marsha, you may be able to call into the phone number? You know, if you want to just wait and just call into the phone number, and then we can move on to somebody else.
She just responded, okay. All right.
To the chair, if you want to move on to somebody else while Marsha calls in.
Laura Hem, is she here?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This would be my first town committee. I've lived in town forever. I'm actually a fifth-generation Upton resident, and I told somebody the other day, growing up, we were all expected to attend town meeting. I've run my own business since I graduated from college. I've worked in the court reporting field in law, and then I branched off, and I went into what's called CART, which is interpreting for the deaf and hard of hearing, with a specialty in law school. I ran my own business with twenty-five people underneath me. Took a couple of years off to raise my children, and now I sell real estate. I've sat on national boards with the Court Reporting Association. I've held national appointments through the mass, through the National and Mass Court Reports Association. I've been a president of the Mass Court Reports Association. I actually wrote, lobbied, and passed a law in Massachusetts in four years for the Court Reporters Association. So I have worked with a variety of individuals, variety of professionals. But as I said, I've always been self-employed. I do have an interest in Upton. I've always lived here. Probably will die here. I think I bring a unique perspective from being self-employed and working across various types of businesses. And I guess that would be it, unless you have questions.
Any questions? Brett, Steve?
No questions. Thank you for putting forward the application.
Thank you.
I think you're doing a good kid on the board.
Nope, definitely. Nice to, nice to meet you on video. I don't think we've met, and it's always great to get new people sort of stepping up and volunteering for some of these, some of these committees. So it's always great to see a, see a new face, Laura. It's nice to, nice to have that. Have you, and you said you have not participated in any town government or town committees recently, or at all?
No.
Okay. But, so this is good, Steve, because I think that this, right, brings up the, right, having someone that's a little bit of, you know, outsider's not the right word, but, but comes in with an objective perspective and view with a professional background. So that's sort of the category I see us trying to fill here. So, thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Right, and I think that's what we want, is some variety in the board, as opposed to having, you know, everybody that's been on committees, you know. You know, even Phil Disutter, for instance, Phil's name jumped off the page, and I thought that's another interesting perspective. He was, you know, not far off my list either. I think I had Phil at number... He and Christine Zedonis, I think I had them, you know, kind of flip-flopped one way or the other, so.
Totally.
I think Phil would have been a great fit as well, so.
Yeah.
It's really just a matter of variety, you know, unfortunately.
And bringing, and bringing in some new, new people. I know it's, it's an interesting spot, because you have all these people that have participated a lot and done so much over the years. It's hard to not be able to give everybody something.
Yeah, because you know, unfortunately, you feel like when you have this many applicants and only five seats to fill, you feel like you're gonna have more people up Yeah, because you know, unfortunately, you feel like when you have this many applicants and only five seats to fill, you feel like you're going to have more people upset with what you've done than happy with what you, how you've selected the committee, so.
Totally. Totally.
Do we, let's see, Jim Bergstrom, is he here? Do you see him, Derek?
I don't see his name listed unless there are, there are three phone numbers that called in, but I don't know if he's one of the three phone numbers that have called in. His name is not listed now.
Well, alright, can we go to the next, is Masha, is she on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us a little overview, Masha?
Sure. I did serve on the search committee for, when, in 2017. Through my career, I have a background of conducting interviews and searches for people. I've served on diversity committees for my companies. I've attended in a number of meetings, I've been on a number of committees. And I, I look forward to helping find another qualified candidate is, hopefully as good as Derek, but I don't know that we can.
Thank you very much, Masha. Any questions, Steve, Brett?
No, I have no questions. Thank you, Masha.
Yep, same, none, none here. We know Masha well and she's a valued asset to the community.
Thank you.
Is Donna DeShadon available?
Yes, I am.
Give us a little overview, Donna.
Alright, I've lived in the community for a number of years. I've participated in a number of commissions. Historical, one of my favorites. I've been on that for a number of years, as well as the Economic Development Commission. Before that, I worked as, maybe in conjunction with that, I've worked as a real estate agent in this area. And that, that just gives you a chance to meet a lot of different people. And they tell you what they're looking for. And I think that's important for the town of Upton. Before that, I worked for a large company, Kodak. And I acted as their human resources person in Wellesley. And interviewed a number of people for different kinds of jobs, working with the district managers there. I am committed to Upton. That's, that's, I think that's very simple. I am committed to Upton. I would like to, I think Upton has been moving forward very nicely under the present town manager. And I would love to see that continue with also thinking about all right, the people that live here and that have lived here for a number of years, like me. You know, this is that, we're, we're looking at the future. And we're, we're at a crossroads. I mean, you know, where are we going to go? But to me, Upton is extremely important. I think the job of position of town manager is extremely important. And I would like to be part of selecting that individual.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions, Steve or Brett?
None, none here. I would just say thank you, Donna, very much as always for, for being willing to help out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions. Thank you, Donna. You've obviously served on an awful lot of committees in town here, so.
And I've enjoyed it.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is Megan Ronzio here?
Hi, yep, I'm here, thank you.
Thanks.
So yeah, just a little bit about myself. My name is Megan Ronzio. I've lived in Upton for almost 20 years now with my husband and our two kids. I've, as Brett mentioned, I was, am part of the Upton Cultural Council. I've been with them for a couple of years. I'm also a board member at the Mendon Upton Education Foundation. And I've also worked as a poll clerk in local elections for, probably, I think, four or five years now. So, I've been in Upton for a while, very committed to the success of Upton professionally. I, I'm the director of a Department of Education program that assigns special decision-makers to students who are in state custody. As part of that, I, I really work a lot kind of at the intersection of a lot of various different state agencies, different public and private entities that all have various perspectives and priorities. And so, you know, really kind of with that background, you know, really interested in finding someone who also has a skill set in that area, who can work for the success and cohesiveness in Upton, a town that, that me and my family and I are very invested in, so. I, I'm happy to apply for this. I think it's a great opportunity. It sounds like the board has a a couple of really great candidates so far, and I'm just honored to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions, Steve, Brett?
I know I have no questions. Thank you for putting your name forward.
Yep, same. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, thank you, Megan. So, we can open this up for nominations?
Is, well, we said Jim wasn't here, is that, that was the, yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I haven't seen him. I can't find him.
So I think, you know, again, so many, so many great candidates and thank you, you know, not only to the, the four of you that just, just shared your experience and interest, but to everybody that applied, so let's make that sort of very clear how grateful we are for that. You know, it's, it's tough. I think, I think, you know, where I'm sort of coming down is filling the, the, meeting the goal of having some more objective folks that aren't so ingrained in, in the town government. You know, it, it was interesting, Steve, you talked about sort of Phil and the, the, the school committee perspective, and so that's one of the things I thought was interesting about Megan was that she brings some of that experience through DESI, which is the, the State Department of State Education for the state. And also the HR experience and working in very complex organizations and sort of governmental agencies, for lack of a better word. I think that that, that experience translates very well to a town manager type, local government type role where you're, you know, in the middle of a lot of stakeholders and having to really be very dramatic in how you, how you operate. You know, I think that, so that's, that's sort of what struck me. That's, so that's, you know, I think Masha and Donna obviously are, you know, wonderful assets to the town, have served in a lot of capacities. I have no doubt that they would be absolutely wonderful on the Town Manager Search Committee. You know, I think they have a lot of, a lot of great experience, but I also think we've got that sort of requirement met with some of the other, with some of the other committee members, so. I don't know much about Jim Bergstrom. You know, Laura, I think was in a very similar category to, to Megan. I think, again, the way, you know, Laura was very much in, sort of on my radar as well, and I think that, you know, that the difference for me, obviously, is why I nominated Megan is that I think some of her experience is a little bit more applicable in the, in the, in the context of a town manager role. You know, if we were talking about an economic development committee or something related to small business, clearly that's where Laura's, you know, strengths are among many areas. She's obviously a very experienced and talented and successful woman, so. Anyway, that's where I would sort of shake out.
Okay, I see, so I'm looking at it too, and I, and I think something that's going to be important really for the board to, to take the next step is, you know, and maybe we don't do it all, all the same time, but we may all have a different vision and a different outlook of where we think the town's headed and what we think is the most important, you know, what are the holes in our game? You know, what is it ultimately that are our weaknesses that we need to address with the next town manager? You know, what, and it may be different for all three of us, but we need to let the board know, or I should say the committee, the committee that we appoint, we may as well really give kind of that objective of what we think. Now, I look and I say, what do I think is our hole, or what is the one thing that we cannot seem to achieve? And the greatest weakness of the community is sitting at 95% residential tax base. To me, that, you know, that's a failure. You know, we've got to, I've never, never seen or spoken to any member of this community that thought that was a good thing, or thought that it was healthy that we're as quaint as we are and that our downtown is as small as it is and that there's so little business in town and so little help to take the burden of taxation off of the shoulders of the taxpayer. So given those type things, those are kind of why I chose, you know, the, the people that I chose because I was kind of looking for a little bit of that conservative viewpoint. You know, I think as I look at the people that we've appointed so far, you know, we have some, some people with young families, so I think we've got that. I've spoken many times to Megan while I'm voting or at annual meeting or whatnot. I think I spoke to her once about the conservation, or not conservation, Cultural Council, I should say. You know, I don't think we can go wrong with any of these choices, but I'm looking for that kind of conservative, that business-minded approach. And that business-minded approach is somebody who's going to see that business mind in the candidate, something that's going to come off that page. That's kind of what I'm looking for, and that's why, you know, I nominated Laura Hebb. I think that that small business mentality is something that this business, that, you know, this town needs to try. I, I believe that our next leader is going to be the one, along with the Board of Selectmen, that's got to try to get us moving in the direction of encouraging business in this town and being more business-friendly. You know, business-friendly can't be something that you just put on a postcard. You've got to implement it, so how do we do that? But that was one of the reasons that I chose, you know, the candidates I had, and, and based on that, I would, I would say Laura Hebb.
Okay. I would have to take a look at Megan Ronzio. She's been in town for quite a few years. She's been involved in the Cultural Council. She is looking for the best in the town. I mean, I think we have, you brought up about the residential, 95% residential, and I think that that's what Dave Ross brings to the table. I think she has a lot, she has children in town. She's been involved. I think I would have to go with Megan Ronzio. I don't know.
Okay. Well, with that, if, if it's okay, I would like to make a motion to appoint Megan Ronzio to the Town Manager Search Committee. Brett Simas, aye.
I would second the motion, Megan Ronzio. Sorry about that. Second the motion for Megan, Stephen Mattelli, aye.
Unanimous action by the board. Thank you all for putting your applications in. And we do have other committees that we need members to. And I, I would hope that you would maybe put, take a look at some of the open spots on all our committees. We're trying to get people involved in the government. And I thank you all very much. So we have Bob Fleming, Dave Ross, Megan Ronzio, Christina Zanis.
And Scott Van Ralten.
Scott Van Ralten. I believe they all have to be sworn in by the town clerk.
Yes, and so they all need to be sworn in prior to their first meeting, which is scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 PM.
Six, 6:30? 6:30.
6:30, yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, I can be at town hall at 6:30 at the beginning of that meeting, so they don't have to try and make separate, separate trips. I will be there to swear them all in. So I'll see you then.
And they're a committee that has executive session and, and all of that, right, Derek? Have we got a set of procedures?
They review the applications of the candidates. They will have to be in executive session at that point. When they interview candidates, they will be in executive session.
Alright. So Thursday night at 6:30 will be their first meeting.
I'll reach out to all of them tomorrow with all the information.
Very good. Congratulations, and thank you. 5.7.3, Town Manager Search Committee Technical Consultant. Derek?
Okay, so, you know, when we had talked about this 30 days ago, we have discussed the need to have an individual work with the search committee who has experience, whether it being a town manager, working as a town manager and understanding the day-to-day responsibilities, the skill sets and the knowledge and abilities that a town manager needs to have in order to be successful. I have talked to a number of my colleagues to determine interest. And what I was able to uncover was that there's an individual, Sandy and I met with him last week, his name is Tim McEnery. He served as a Grafton Town Administrator for 11 years. He served in the city Worcester for a period of time and a number of other communities prior to his time in Grafton. Tim is now working as a consultant in this sense, and he is willing to come forward and work with the search committee. He's able to attend their first mini, their first meeting and give them the guidance and technical support that they need in order to identify three final candidates that will ultimately go to the Board of Selectmen. So with your permission, it would be helpful to appoint Tim McEnery as the technical consultant to the search committee.
Maureen's muted again.
I, Maureen, you're muted, but I, I think I have a few concerns about this, just, just because the whole timing. My overall concern is that, you know, we've got a really aggressive schedule. And we're not going to be able, I feel like we're not going to be able to achieve what we think we're going to be able to achieve by April 1st or April 5th. You know, obviously, just to look at Plymouth, it took them five or six months, you know, in their hiring process of, of Derek. The last time we went through this process, you know, I believe it was more or less a six-month process that we had our interim town manager, Bob Reed, on board. So this is a process, and being a process, I think that we've got to cross the bridge sooner or later that we're going to need an interim town manager. I had spoke with Derek earlier. Bob Reed is currently being employed by someone, you know, there would be familiarity there. But I think that we've really got to, instead of hiring a technical consultant, you know, I don't know exactly what the cost would be to have this person on board. You know, what kind of hours they'd be looking to put in. I'm not even so sure that it's necessary. There's a lot of experience on the board, you know. I think really the bigger discussion or the smarter discussion for us is to really look at this timeline and try to think of, you know, who are we going to get to fill the seat? You know, from whatever it is, second or third week of March through, you know, maybe it's June 1st before we can get, you know, the process done, the contracts worked out, and everything that needs to happen to actually hire and appoint a town manager.
I am, and, and forgive me, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite tracking, so I, I'm a little confused. I, I think, I thought what we were talking about with Tim- I think, I thought what we were talking about with Tim McInerney was that he would essentially not play the town manager role in any capacity, that he would be a part of the Town Manager Search Committee, and just share some technical expertise around what it is a town manager does, to provide that expertise as an advisor to the Town Manager Search Committee without having a vote. I don't think it is anything to do with hiring him to play the role of a town manager consultant for the sake of town business.
Right. But this, what I'm saying is, this appointment, there would be a salary associated with it. No, he's not just donating his time as a consultant to the town. And I don't think we need that, that type of input at this particular juncture. That's, that's what I'm trying to get to. So, I'm not sure how you got confused. But to get a former town manager to come in and sit in on the beginning process of a board, the formation of a board, I think is redundancy. I don't think we need them. We, you know, we didn't have them back in 2009, you know, when we went through this process, back when I served on the committee, we never had anybody give us any technical expertise. The last time we went through this process, we hired a search firm. But I think that, you know, especially given between our personnel board, and now the screening committee that's set up, I just don't feel that we need them.
Well, well.
I think, wait a minute. I think what the consultant would do, the technical consultant, is to, like, develop a matrix of scoring, make a timeline, and help in the interview process. I don't think, I think that's very much needed.
And I, I'm, so I missed the cost. What's the cost component?
We, we talked about $75 per hour.
Again, as I stated earlier, I don't think this particular component is necessary. We've been through the process three times in 11 years. You know, this will be the third time in 11 years, I guess, to be more accurate. I just don't think it's necessary. I think the overview of the whole process is, and the reason I'm blending the two ideas together is, at some point in time, we've got to kind of wrap our heads around the fact that we're going to need an interim town manager. This has nothing to do with a consultant. I'm just saying, at some point, we're going to need interim town manager.
I think that's maybe where my confusion was coming in, is that you were blending those two concepts. So, I, to me, that's a totally separate discussion, whether we can hire somebody and have a new town manager in here soon enough that we don't need to have an interim town manager, or a gap in how we're running the operation. I think there's lots of different ways to handle that gap, if we're going to talk a little bit about it now. You know, there's all sorts of people that you can put into an interim role, from various backgrounds, that, that can run you from not costing you anything to, you know, something like what we did with Bob Reed. But I think that, you know, ideally, we would get to a point where we would be able to hire someone pretty quickly, right? I know that we've, you know, that we've had good response in terms of the number of applications. And so, it seems like if the search committee has a good tranche of applicants, and they can go through it, and, and get that matrix together, again, I think that's something that the consultant could help with, right? Like, what are the criteria? Let's look at what we have done in the past, and let's refine it and improve it. And I mean, I think you're right, right? We clearly did this a few times in the past, and I don't know that we ever had a consultant at $75 an hour, but we did pay a search firm. So, I have to believe that however many hours of consultation Tim would give us, it would be far less than what we paid the search committee in the past. So, I'm not sure it's an exact comparison, or fair comparison, to say that we've not had this type of person in the past. We did, it was a search committee, or it was a, it was a search firm. So, you know, we're basically swapping out a search firm for an individual consultant slash expert, which I think is really important in a process like this.
I would have to agree with that, Brett. I do think we need a consultant. And $75 would be, an hour would be a lot less than what a search firm would do for us.
So, one of my other concerns is, I don't want to have a consultant come in and completely take the objectivity away from the committee. So, that's, you know, another concern that I have. If the consultant comes in, sometimes they tend to be overbearing on a committee. They want to, you know, again, we had our own scoring system back in 2009, or as we like to call it, a matrix. We had our matrix scoring system back in 2009, where we were able to rank candidates, you know, put them, assign them in an order. We actually held the first round of interviews. I think we interviewed 12 candidates, our first go-round back in 2009. So, again, the expertise is on the committee. When I said that we didn't have it in the past, I was referring to the 2009 committee that we had together. And as you mentioned, Brett, we did have a search firm assisting the committee back in 2017.
Yeah. Seems like that search was a lot more successful than when we didn't have consultation. Okay. So, what do we, what do we do, motion here?
I would say, to appoint Tim McInerney. Is that his name, Derek?
Okay. So, I make, I make the motion to appoint Tim McInerney as a technical consultant, as described, for, to support the town manager support process with the, with the pay of, do we have to put that in there, Derek, the $75 an hour, or is that separate?
I mean, I don't think you need to, but if you, but that's what it is. But if you makes it better, if it feels better for the motion, that's fine.
Okay. So, let's include that in there as the motion. Brett Simas, aye?
Steven Mattalian, nay?
Maureen Dornell, second, aye. Majority vote. All right. 5.8, Discuss Board of Selectmen's Budget Review. We have DPW, COA, Code Enforcement, and Town Clerk. Do we have the DPW director here?
Yes, you do. Through the chair, if I may. My budget's probably going to take the longest. And I know you have, it's getting late, and you have quite a few to go through. I don't mind waiting till last.
Well, I just thought you had a long ride home. Maybe you'd want to be first.
I am home.
Oh, you are. That's right. How about the Council on Aging? Is Janice here?
I am here. We'll start with you, Janice. Can you give us an overview of your budget?
Janice, you're on mute.
Uh-oh. What about now?
Can hear you now.
Okay. Thank you. I thank you to Dennis again for letting me go. So, the overall budget that I'm looking for, for 2023 is $208,259. So, the increase is really pretty much for wages. We have the 2% COLA, and then the step increase. This was a little bit more complicated than years past. And I want to do a big shout out to Kelly for helping me with this, because with the new building going to be opening in December, we were looking at the breaking down. Janice, you muted again. I did not touch it.
We can hear you now.
Don't look at me like that, Derek. There might be ghosts in my room here. So, what was the last that you heard, that I thanked, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, so it's, it's a decrease in the budget, but then Kelly picked up the maintenance into a separate budget for buildings. So, it looks a little bit more complicated. No, it's not all these lovely decreases and things. Yeah. What else would you like to know? My huge raise in there?
Have you got one?
That Steve's going to give me. Steve's going to give me that one.
Since you brought that up, would you like to talk about your step increases? How are those being dispersed amongst your employees?
So, what we did was, we developed goals for folks. And actually, I have the goals for my staff right here with me. And we've been reviewing them. And it's going to be, their goals aren't like, simple goals, quite honestly. They're more higher level, so that there's, they have to reach a little further to, to achieve them. So, they have to excel or exceed. Like, for me, it's a new community center. There's a whole lot of goals that go along with that. Actually, is that one of my goals, Derek? I don't remember. Actually, one of my goals we'll be talking about in a minute. So, yes, there is a process. It's not we're handing out, like, these increases to people. They have to be earned.
Okay. Brett, any questions?
No. I think this is another great budget proposal from our great Council on Aging Director. So, thank you very much, Janice.
You're welcome.
I did have one quick question. Page 41 of the budget presentation, you have at the bottom, the increase in cleaning service, but under cleaning, it actually shows a decrease.
So, that kind of went back and forth a little bit further, because we were using Paul as our cleaner, and now we've actually just hired a cleaning service to come in and do the cleaning. So, the budget is just kind of adjusted to meet what's going to be a real number of what we'll need for the cleaning.
Okay.
Do I mention now my article that I have?
You can.
Sure.
Okay. So, I want a new bus, and that's one of my goals. Maureen, you laugh, but I'm not kidding. I had, somebody said to me the other day, they thought it was terrible that we let our seniors ride around in that awful-looking bus. But I wanted to explain to them that the steering might not look great, but the interior of the engine is wonderful. And, well, anyways, you get where I'm going with that. So, Brett, did you get that? You got it.
You got grant money to help purchase that, right?
Well, we do. And we have $42,400 with the Rockwood Meadows V. and Donation Fund to go towards that. So, we're looking for $45,000 to purchase the bus.
Well, Janice, when you're asking for a new bus, aren't you supposed to take a pay freeze and reduce your gasoline in your budget?
You did, you did kind of ask for it, Janice.
That's why I keep responding. Yes, I deserved it. I know, I agree. I agree.
Any other questions for Janice?
No, I have none other.
Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
Take care. All right. Good night.
Night.
Is anyone here from Code Enforcement?
I'm here. Pat Roach.
Hi, Pat.
How are you? If you want to take a look at it, it's pretty simple.
Okay.
Level funded, except for the 2% for salaries. Okay. If per inspection, you see that down there, $36,000, we pay our electrical and plumbing assistant, and, I'm sorry, the assistant and the main inspector. Well, as you'll see, it's, you know, it's a token amount of money, okay? The $7,000 for John Corio. Dave, our assistant electrical, is free. Tom is $7,7189, which is our plumbing inspector, the lead inspector, and Ken, the assistant. We give them that, plus we give them $30, $30 per inspection. So, it varies, you know, over the years, over a year, how much they do get for a final payment. Whatever it is, it's, you know, we have to take into consideration, if you looked at our, our report from the Code Enforcement Department for '21, you know, you look at permits, permits, permits issued, but you can't do times one. Building is times seven. That's 3,535 inspections we did, okay? The wiring, they do at least three. That's 963. Plumbing, did about 453. And of course, gas inspector only has to do one. That goes up to 5,123 inspections. I think that's pretty, pretty good, that we can accomplish that at a part-time department. Total revenue we took in '21 was $329,118. If you take a look at what our budget is for next year, we made, we'll be making, well, we made last year, $128,641 in profit, if you want to call it that. We did pretty well. And I think this, next year, we're going to do even bigger. There's going to be more projects, and a lot more inspections. So, we've done pretty good as a department. I don't think Selectmen get any complaints. I have one issue, the longevity. And I've asked several times, why does the part-time inspectors do not get a longevity bonus? You know, we don't, we don't cost the town very much, you know, with, we get gas mileage, we get no insurance. You know, we don't cost the town anything, you know? That's a big thing, having no insurance or whatever. You know, how much that costs, you know, for a department? We don't get that. We get it for diet, so, diet. But, um.
Well, well taken.
What do you think? You know, the longevity, I've only been doing this 43 years, you know, and they took that away, you know? And we, we're part-time, though, and they put us under a different category, I think.
That may be a conversation for another, that may be a conversation for another day. I think this is a department budget presentation. So, but thank you.
Yes. All right. Is there any questions?
Just quickly, Pat, could you just tell me again, what was that revenue number? You said $328,000?
Total revenue, what, we took in, in '21?
Yes. You know, you remind us every year of
I do.
Code Enforcement, right, how, how relatively low the budget is, and how many dollars actually come into the town. And, you know, you did mention that longevity last year, that longevity. So, we're going to have to take that up, perhaps after we get through the budget process, that might be something we can discuss. So, maybe send out a reminder to the board in the future, because year goes by, and then the next year comes around, you mention it to us, and, you know, unfortunately.
Yeah, it goes quick.
Yeah, unfortunately, we're two hours or so into this meeting, or, yeah, pretty close to two hours in, and we still got a ways to go, so.
I don't expect you to even discuss it any further, okay? But, hey, there's the bus. That'd be a nice bus, huh?
That's it.
Wouldn't I know that money goes into the general, you know, accounting? But here's the money for the bus.
Right. Right.
All right. Any other questions for me?
No other questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much, Pat. Great work as always. Thank you.
See you later. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye now.
Um, Kelly, are you all set?
I, uh, yes, I am all set, but I'm actually planning on staying for the whole meeting, so I'm gonna do what Dennis did. And Dennis, if you are ready, if you wanna go, that way, I usually stay on for the whole meeting, so I'll hear you and then I'll go. How's that sound?
Aren't you nice? Well, thank you. So yeah, DPW is a rather large budget. We do this every single year. I try to stay with the highlights and talk about, for the board's um, consideration, just the things that are really changing. So um, stop me at any time you wanna talk about anything. I'm gonna start with highway and go from there. So the highway budget this year is proposed at one million, one hundred and twelve thousand thirty-seven dollars. This is an increase of one thousand, I'm sorry, this is an increase of thirteen thousand one hundred and eight dollars or one point two percent. This increase can be broken down as such. For wages, there is an eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollar increase for the two percent COLA. Fifty-two point two weeks for fiscal year twenty-three. There's a three thousand forty-five dollar appropriation for potential step increase or merit increase. As uh, Selectman Italian brought up before, goes through a process. Doesn't guarantee anyone's necessarily gonna get it. They have to earn it. There is one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars that is actually being transferred from the expense account. It's in the CBA, it's in the contract for the employees for their cell phone stipends. And it's, for some reason, when we originally negotiated it, we put it in the expense account and it comes out of the um, I'm sorry, yeah, we put it in the expense account, it comes out of the salary account. So we switched it. So the nineteen eighty is being added to wages, but you're gonna see down below, it's being deducted from expenses. On the expense side, we have one increase of one thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. And that is for, uh, kind of embarrassing, the increase in the trailer rental. My office suite. The double wide. And then we have the one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar decrease, as I mentioned, that the cell phones are being moved from expenses to salaries. And that is the highway budget in totality. Any questions on that?
I think when we get over to the column of numbers, I usually ask you every year as far as the breakdowns of, you know, how many machine operators we have? How many are considered laborers and whatnot, but I can wait till we get deeper into the pages.
Okay.
Unless you wanna address it now.
I'll do highway right now. So there is a superintendent, there is one mechanic, and there is four heavy equipment slash labors slash truck drivers.
Okay. All right, very good.
Uh, for revenues, um, keep in mind that the highway division is, this is a service oriented division. It's designed um, to take from the tax base and provide a service, not necessarily a product. We don't have a lot in permits other than curb, uh, curb cuts or road opening permits. So we don't anticipate an increase in the, the annual three thousand dollars roughly we take in in permit fees. Moving on to parks, forestry and cemetery. Uh, the proposed parks, forestry and cemetery budget for fiscal year twenty-three is three hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. This is a fifty-nine thousand thirty-dollar increase or twenty point five percent. Um, I, I wanted to mention that before I get into all of the breakdown. This is primarily due to the increase in personnel. As, as you remember from the last meeting, we had the town floor approved the increase in personnel for assisting with Maplewood Cemetery and augmenting uh, cemetery parks and forestry division. And seventeen thousand dollars was brought over, was appropriate, raised it appropriated so that we could bring the individual on in April, anticipating spring work. And then starting in July, this is moving it into the appropriation. Any questions on that part of it?
No.
Um, the other increases are three thousand two hundred and forty-six for the two percent COLA for the fifty-two point two weeks. Uh, seven thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars is part of the CBA agreement for license upgrades. Seven hundred and ten dollars is an increase in the minimum wage. Keep in mind, we have the part-time seasonal people that we employ every single year to help us with Kiwanis trash around town and mowing and weed whacking. And as you know, minimum wage, wage is going to increase. So this is anticipating that. And then finally, three hundred dollars is being transferred uh, for the cell phone stipend as it was in the highway. So it is coming out of expenses, going into wages.
Dennis, if you could just talk for a minute about the seventy-seven hundred and forty-one dollars, uh, when you say relicense upgrades, this is Parks, Forests Cemetery. So we're talking about driver's license, pesticide license, what are we talking about?
So we have, we have a, an individual in there that was originally a laborer and through contract negotiations has uh, agreed to increase his license. He has his pesticide license. He is obtaining a hoisting engineer, I'm sorry, he has obtained a hoisting engineer's license and has obtained a commercial driver's license so that he can drive the big trucks when we have somebody out. Now we're not scrambling or taking the truck off the road. He, and he has done it this year where we have an employee who was out on FMLA. This individual already has been um, stepping into those, that role. And by the contract right now, I have to pay him an upgrade. This, this is just making it so that his license is used all the time. We can use him whenever we want and it's in the CBA. It was part of the agreement that was voted on.
Okay.
And then finally, expenses, seven hundred dollars is for the additional employee clothing allowance. Four hundred and eighty dollars is an increase uh, for um, where the senior center is being built. We have cameras there by um, the VFW. And the VFW, both the VFW and the police chief has asked us if we were able to upgrade those cameras so that the police department can have live video and recording capabilities. And it was only a four hundred and eighty dollar increase for the contract we already have in place for the cameras. So that's what that represents. So now with the new community center going there, we will actually have live video coverage on the parking area next to the VFW at the PD. And finally, the three hundred dollar transfer uh, for the phone stipend from expenses into wages. Any questions?
No.
Moving on to water. I'm not, I'm not going too fast, am I? I'm not trying to fly through it, but I know it's getting late. Um, for the water department division, sorry, the proposed annual budget is nine hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. This is actually a decrease in twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-two bucks or minus two point two percent. This is primarily due to debt falling off. Remember, in the, in the, the water division and the wastewater division enterprise accounts, we look at the entire budget, uh, which includes long-term, short-term debt, wages, expenses, unforeseen. All that is included in capital outlay. So a budget can decrease, for instance, because of debt and other places can increase. And it doesn't necessarily have an, an effect that you would think on the rate. The, the forty-five thousand dollar decrease, like I said, is from debt falling off. I think Kenny mentioned that uh, he did some refinancing um, and has seriously increased our, uh, I'm sorry, decreased our debt service. Um, for wages, we have a five thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollar increase for the two percent COLA for the fifty-two point two weeks. Five thousand seventy-nine dollar increase for the maximum license upgrades. Now, let me explain this. If you recall, right before town meeting, when we were approving the CBA for the, the employees, there was a question that was raised, I don't remember if one of you raised it or someone from FinCom raised it, about it seemed like we were going more than two percent. And I said, there was actually a backlog of time, remember, where we had, we hadn't had a budget in place for two consecutive budgets. And there are people in the wastewater and water division that are allowed in the contract to increase their licenses up to a certain point. When they do that, there are step increases built in that they are entitled to. Three employees obtained new licenses and we actually were gonna be short in the funding. And that's why it was included in that article. So to correct that, so it doesn't happen again, uh, we took into consideration what the total cost would be if everybody got upgraded in a given year and added it into the, we, we increased those two line items in water and wastewater. And five thousand seventy-nine is the increase. Now they, they, they don't get the licenses, obviously, we don't spend the money. It doesn't go into the general fund, it's an enterprise account, it stays in retained earnings. It's like it has its own savings account. So only the enterprise account can use those funds. So it's not a waste of money. Four thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars uh, is for the foreman position. We did have some conversation during the vote to ratify the contract about this position. And I tried to explain uh, the necessity for it through the DEP where we have licensing issues. We're in that right now, but the DEP is bearing with us. Where they do not like to have one person hold both a water and wastewater license on behalf of the town. And in the past, we've had um, Dean Popper, who recently retired, was holding one license. And Joe Marsinkas was, the superintendent was holding the other. Dean has since retired. And he did that simply because it needed to be done, but it needs to be bargained in the contract. And the bargaining, the contract was requiring that if any, we want anyone else to step up, then we should be considering, and the DEP endorsed, uh, having a full-time foreman in that position. So they can assume the role of the superintendent in his absence, which he do now for, for um, the, an hourly upgrade or hourly stipend. But this is full-time and this is what the DEP is requesting. And this person will hold one of the licenses, whether it's water or wastewater, on behalf of the town and satisfy that requirement.
So when you say full-time foreman, we're talking about someone who was a full-time employee, but now they're gonna be considered a full-time foreman?
Right, we're not, I, I get, exactly. It's a good question, Steve. We're not adding personnel. It's, it's gonna be an upgrade for one of our current employees.
And that's on the water side.
It's on
Now, I thought, I thought I saw that on the wastewater side.
It's on both. The foreman's position is a foreman for water and wastewater. All of our positions are cross-trained.
So one person will receive both of those um, advances in pay?
Correct.
Okay.
Nine hundred and ninety dollars is the cell phone. Once again, it's a recurring theme. You'll see it on the, on the wastewater side as well. It's being transferred from expenses into wages. Seven hundred and forty-six dollars is a step increase for non-unions. This is the incentive we talked about, not guaranteed. People have to earn it. Two thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollar reduction is because uh, and you don't see this too often, so I'm happy to report this. We, we uh, when we have an opening in a position, we have to go by the current people that are there when we're trying to estimate what a person is gonna come in and take their place. And we actually had a position that opened, then a person came in, part-time person came in a, at a lower rate than what was being paid previously. And so we adjusted that line item to be accurate and reflect what they're actually making. And it was a decrease. And then we had someone retire, so the three hundred and twenty-five dollar longevity payment went away. So that was also a reduction. On the expense side, you have four thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollar increase to health insurance. Remember, this is an enterprise account, so it's not paid out of the general fund. Four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollar increase in contribution to the Worcester Pension Fund. A four hundred and forty dollar increase to Medicare. And then that nine hundred and ninety dollar um, decrease for moving, transferring the cell phone stipend. And that is all of water. Any questions on water?
No. Nope.
Uh, on the, of course, on the uh, the receipt side, you can see that as we do every single year, we are going to raise through our user charges and our water connection fees. We are not um, we are not doing any surcharge whatsoever for the first time. Uh, we are not doing any retained earnings for the budget itself. And one hundred and twenty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars is assessed to the tax levy. As the remainder of that debt dwindles, that number will eventually hit zero. That is, I know that's the board's goal, it's been the board's goal since I've been here, the town manager's goal, and it is decreasing every single year. Love it. On the uh, wastewater side, uh, the proposed wastewater budget is seven hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars, which is a decrease of sixty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars or eight point seven percent decrease. The main um, the main catalyst for this decrease is a hundred thousand dollar decrease in capital outlay. This year, you see, we didn't put any capital outlay in because capital outlay is um, a tougher thing to use for major capital. It's okay if you're gonna buy a pickup truck with it or something like that, but when you're doing major projects, you have twelve months to finish everything you need to do. Otherwise, like, like we end a fiscal year on our regular budget, it becomes um, free cash. While on the enterprise account, it becomes retained earnings. And then the money goes away, and if you're in the middle of a project, you have to try to encumber it or you lose it. So we're trying to be a little more fussy, I should say, about what we use capital outlay for. Also, keep in mind that capital outlay has a direct impact on the rate. There's also a decrease uh, in the debt of eight thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. So for wastewater, the debt has decreased. Just lost my place. Wages. So wages, we have a five thousand seven hundred and thirty, thirty dollar increase for the two percent COLA. A five thousand seventy-nine dollar budget uh, for the license upgrades, for the maximum license upgrades, if everyone were to increase all their licenses. Four thousand three hundred and sixty-six for the foreman's position. Nine hundred and ninety dollars for the transfer in the cell phones. Four hundred and seventy-six dollars for the uh, incentive merit step increase for non-union employees. A decrease of two thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars, once again, to adjust that department specialist wage line item that was overfunded. And a decrease of three hundred and twenty-five dollars for the retirement uh, of an individual and, and no more longevity.
Just a, just a quick question. You had mentioned wastewater. Now, the chart that I have in front of me, it's showing, and I know it's not a, a big number, but it's showing debt was ten thousand five thirty-seven and it's now gonna be an FY twenty-three, nineteen thousand. So it looks like it's going up about eighty-five hundred dollars? I think you said it was gonna decrease, so I'm not sure if my number's wrong or
It's going up, but it came off the tax levy. So it's no longer subsidized. So it's a hundred percent in this, speaking with Kenny Costa, we were close enough and you know, we take our direction from the board. I know there's a couple of times the board brought up that we were so close, can't we get rid of this subsidy? So the subsidy, it was close enough that Kenny and I discussed it and decided that we were gonna pull it off the, the tax rate and put it a hundred percent on the enterprise account.
Okay.
The debt's still there, but now it's not being split. It's, it's a hundred percent on the rate there.
Okay. And that was reconciled when we did the bond borrowing two months ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that represents a nineteen thousand, I see it. Very good.
And then for uh, expenses, we have four thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars for an increase in health insurance. Four thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars for an increase in Worcester Pension Fund. Four hundred and thirty dollars for an increase in Medicare and a subtraction of nine hundred and ninety dollars for the transfer of the cell phone stipend. And once again, you can see the budget revenue chart to reflect it's exactly what the water revenue chart reflects for addressing what needs to be raised through user charges, connection fees. And no tax levy, no retained earnings and no surcharge. And that is wastewater. That's all the budget. Wasn't that bad, was it?
No, very good, Dennis.
Good stuff. We always love it. This is one of my favorites, Dennis.
Are you bottling me up now?
We, we've listened to it so many times now, we actually really understand it now, right?
It's taken a few years, but I think we got it.
Really sinking in.
Okay, uh, through the chair, would you like to move on to capital?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. So uh, the first one is our annual road maintenance. And as I do every single year, I requested the five hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and eighty. It's my understanding that um, we have put forth two hundred thousand as a commitment for roads this year. It's my understanding that um we have put forth two hundred thousand as a commitment for roads this year. And I understand, you know, every single year, we have to evaluate what we have to work with. Uh, and I, I do want to express my gratitude. That I, and I see it clearly that there's a commitment from this board, the finance committee, the town manager. And the town floor to continue with our road maintenance program the best we can. And that was more than evident last year when there was some leftover money from the school and that money. Of approximately a hundred and sixty-four thousand or a hundred and sixty-nine thousand was transferred over to our roads. So I'm very thankful to all of you for trying so hard to keep this number going the best you can.
Thank you.
The roadside mower was originally discussed, but it was not brought forward this year. Uh, the only thing I want to say about the roadside mower is when we originally talked about this, well, it's been four years now. Time goes by so fast. It's like everything else. I think it was a hundred and. Twenty thousand or a hundred and twenty-seven thousand four years ago. It's a hundred and sixty grand now, so.
Yeah.
That's going to continue to, no, I want to keep it. As a discussion point and hopefully the right time comes when we can talk about it more seriously. Uh, but I do understand. I think I'll.
Quick, quick question on roads. Um, I haven't seen anything. Have you heard anything out of Boston as far as what our chapter ninety money is going to look like? I mean, it's typically three hundred and fifty K a year or thereabouts. I mean, do we know if it's an increase this year, decrease?
I haven't seen anything uh, uh, oh, for July one? Yes. Yeah, so two hundred million, so it was three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the town. I believe if you go on the website, you'll see it if it's updated.
But what is it projected for twenty-three?
I haven't seen that one yet.
Haven't seen it.
It's the one that's coming for this summer. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I think our big expense this year for um. The D P W is probably the front-end loader and we, we've had some discussions about this in the past. If you look at our capital plan, this was actually scheduled to be replaced several years ago. This is a, and I had written my, in my memo in nineteen ninety-nine and I was wrong. When I was speaking with a mechanic today, it's a nineteen ninety-six Caterpillar uh front-end loader. With almost ten thousand hours on it. So this machine is twenty-six years old. Uh, and I'll tell you, it, it still runs really well. Um, we, we're getting some serious rot around the cab with. The door, the driver's side door won't close correctly anymore. We're going to need some, do some work to it. But my biggest problem with is. This is such a crucial piece of equipment to the town, like the five big trucks are that maintain the treatment of our roads. This is the machine that loads those trucks. Um, and also the machine that goes out and pushes up corners and, and we use it for a multitude of things. And to have it go down, it's, it's dependability is getting questioned to me. So. It was due to be replaced several years ago. I'm putting it forward this year. Um, because the price is just going to keep going up. It's a two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar expense. Now, in, in the article, if you see the article that I put together, I want to raise one thing in particular. And it's not. Typical of me to do this. In, in all the years that I've been here, I have. Auctioned off to every single piece of equipment we've replaced. Even the pickup truck from the water department last year that I said, I want to hang on to that pickup truck, but I'm going to auction off the worst one in the fleet to take its place. It was a one-for-one, a piece of equipment still went. In fact, in my twenty-seven years, I can count on one hand how many times. I recommended strongly to the town that they hang on to a piece of equipment and not get rid of it. And I'm going to recommend that with this piece of equipment. Simply because the loaders are so expensive. We got twenty-six years out of this machine. I seriously doubt you'll get twenty-six years out of the new one. They don't make them like this anymore. It's just one of those things. Besides the fact that we find ourselves in situations many times during the winter. That. The loader has to stay onsite and load trucks. Meantime, we're trying to push up intersections that are too large for us to push up. And tobacco is out there trying to do it all by itself and it takes us days. With people complaining about line of sight and the police department reminding us. And then the fire department and police department calling because their parking lot is so full of snow, we can't move it. And it's just one machine. More importantly is. The estimated value of this machine traded in is peanuts compared to what we get out of it as a value. So this is one of those cost-benefit analysis that I. It's the only time I ever recommend to a board that you consider hanging on to this piece of machine. For the little bit of money that you're going to get for auctioning it off. And that's my recommendation for this piece. I strongly urge the board to consider retaining this machine. And we use it lightly and we keep it in the salt. We try to get the new machine, which is very expensive. To last twenty years or a little better and we did really well. When this machine's done, I recommend we just auction it off or whatever we can. That's my recommendation for the front-end loader.
I, I do have this conversation with other departments in town and other customers. But we have um a customer of ours that has an old cap loader and it's actually much older than the town's loader. And they won't get rid of it for that reason. What people don't realize is. New equipment today has a lot of emissions and a lot of control units in place. D E F fluid, catalytic converters, even, even smaller tractors. That roadside mower that you're talking about. Now will have a form of a catalytic converter with knock sensors on it. People don't realize that these old diesels. You really will, that machine will actually bury all of us. That will still be, somebody will be running that machine fifty years from today. Uh, they just don't, yeah, they're. They're very, very heavy duty and those old engines are, I hate to say it, but they're almost infinitely rebuildable. So you can just keep running that. But I would like to, uh, while I have a second, um. If you could, I'll probably reach out to maybe the town mechanic. I always like to look at capital items. Um, you know, kind of crawl under it, check it out and all that. So I'd like to take a look at the. Loader.
A complete maintenance log. You can see everything we've done to the machine every single year.
Okay, great.
Um, through the chair, moving on.
Yes.
Grove Street Bridge. So as we all know, Grove Street Bridge, uh. The D O T recently put some restrictions on it. And um. The first thing we need to do obviously is get it engineered. This is a very important bridge in town. It's downtown, center. Um. It's also one of the larger bridges we have. It's larger than Fowler Bridge was. And um, there's also an appetite to have a footbridge attached to it. So I anticipate we'll be looking at designs that include a footbridge. That is attached to it, but not part of the street travel lane. You follow me? So there's, you have a, you actually have a delineation between the traffic and pedestrians. The grant just opened up again. Remember, we, we applied for the grant and was successful in getting five hundred thousand dollars towards Fowler Bridge. They have reworded it a little bit. On there being a little picky about how much I can use for engineering and how much I can use for construction. But the five hundred is still there and rest assured, we're going to go after it and I intend to get it. In the meantime, I need to move forward. With designing this bridge because the clock is ticking. And I anticipate once we uh award it and contract. After we design it, we'll have a complete construction cost. We will have to come back to the taxpayers and talk about what we got for the grant. And what's remaining that needs to be raised and appropriated to replace this bridge. This is an expensive bridge. I have some rough estimates coming in. I don't like them. I hope they're going to fall. I don't know if it's just a, it's, it's because of the economy right now. Um. So four hundred thousand dollars gets us the complete design, including all of the permits. Uh, water analysis, chapter eighty-five license. There's no chapter ninety required. I'm sorry, chapter ninety-five, I believe it is. Those for the, for this one is not required. Army Corps obviously is required. And most of the run-of-the-mill stuff that we did for Fowler. This also includes utilities. So water uh and wastewater will be considered in the design for bringing it across the bridge. Do you have any questions on the four hundred thousand?
The only, the only question I have, and it's not about the four hundred thousand and, and I think that this is probably a moot point. But I just wanted to raise it here, given some of the past conversations in terms of the downtown visioning. But there were some, some talk of, you know, moving that road uh so that it would sort of come out behind the Restine Building. And avoid uh coming right into that downtown sort of intersection area. And it was, you know, deemed that that wasn't possible because of the sightlines. It was too sharp of a turn. Um, but. Is that, does that? I mean, does, does this give us any opportunity to change that? Or is it because there's property there? It's not like we could relocate the bridge and sort of solve any of those problems?
I, I think the biggest pushback came back from Mast dot themselves.
Yeah.
I think that they, if I recall during those conversations with the town manager. Um, and Mast dot regarding, when we were talking about the potential for a roundabout versus lights. Uh, they were indicating that regardless of what happened at that intersection of Grove Street and one forty. If we change it, change the trajectory of that bridge and we come out behind the library, they were going to require a light there. And they weren't going to allow any more parking on that road. Like, like we have right now for the country super and um across the street, the hair salon and. All that was going to be impacted. I think a combination of that. Uh, the engineering alone, just to change the trajectory was another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I think all that combined left it the way it's going.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you for the refresher.
Uh, so just two quick questions. Well, a couple of comments and a couple of quick questions. Um, right now, you mentioned utilities, so water and sewer at this point. And I assume somewhere in the vicinity of um the Restine Building? They do not cross that bridge?
They're on both sides. It's the funny thing. They're on both sides of the bridge, but they don't go across the bridge. They're coming from behind it and they're out in front of it on one forty side, but they don't cross the bridge.
Okay.
And it would behoove the town to make that connection.
Right, right, yeah. I agree there. I mean, I think my, my comment would be this. I sure would like to have that state grant money in hand. Before I go ahead and appropriate four hundred thousand to engineering and design studies. This is a really big budget presentation. We're not a, you know, a hundred percent sure right now where the school is at. Uh, there's a lot of capital, a, a lot of capital articles in the draft warrant or on the draft warrant. So I would really like to kick this till November. I think that'll give uh us a chance to hopefully receive that grant that you spoke of. Are those closing sometime this summer? Is that when their? Uh, small bridge grant application ends?
They just opened. I mean, literally this, I think it was the past week, they just, they just announced that they're open again. But there's changes in the, in the language and I breezed through it. But if I read it correctly, they're only going to allow one hundred thousand dollars of the five hundred thousand to go for engineering. And the rest of it has to go for construction.
Yeah. I, I mean, either way, we're.
I believe that's what I read.
Yeah. I mean, either way, we're going to spend all of it.
Yeah.
Um, it's just a matter of what is the timetable? If it just opened, does it close July first, August first, September first? What is the timetable for when that grant process closes and when it's awarded?
The last one ran for the better part of two years. I think until they exhaust funding. And then it, it stalls for a while and then it comes back. I, it's been gone now for well over a year. Because right around when we got the extension for Fowler, right after we constructed Fowler, uh, it dried up. And then it was gone for quite a while.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that would be my comment. I would not be in favor of putting this forward for this annual town meeting. Uh, certainly in the fall. I think that's when we traditionally like to address capital. And, you know, I think we've got an awful lot of money on there. For this May, so I, I mean, I'd like to, and, and I think it gives us a better insight into what that application process. And award process will look like, you know, hopefully you're successful and then it's a, absolutely an easy decision. Um, you know, come fall. But now it's, you know, in my mind, it looks like the buggy before the horse.
Right. The only thing I would say through the chair, if I could respond to that. Um. I understand. I understand, Steve, exactly what you're saying. The only problem I have is that. I don't see this as being avoidable. I, I don't think we can, we can stall it for a little while. I don't know that that's going to help us. Uh, one, I don't think it'll help us with grants. Two, I don't think it's going to make it any cheaper. And three, the state could, the state knows I'm actively going after this. They've been in contact with me on a regular basis. If I give them any indication that we're not putting it forward in the spring. It may make me make some more modifications to that bridge. Right now, they have asked me to put Jersey barriers up where the orange barrels are. So it's going to narrow that bridge. And I, I, I don't know what the bridge team will tell me if I tell them we're pushing that out another six months before we go after funding. I would have to relay that to them without a doubt.
If, if I could through the chair, uh, to Dennis's point, Mast D O T has declared this last summer an unsafe bridge. As Dennis pointed out, there are Jersey barriers on one side. Uh, I would encourage the board to, to consider. Uh, placing this article on the warrant. We have one point nine million dollars in free cash. Um, and this is a public safety hazard. When we think about prioritizing how we spend free cash, uh, public safety is always um. The number one on our prioritization list. And there is nothing that you will see on this year's warrant that would take the place of. The hazard of, of this bridge. So um, it's going to take months and months to design. Um, Dennis has already indicated he's pursuing the small bridge, the bridge program. Paul D, our town planner, is uh also pursuing another bridge program. Um, so we are doing everything we can to try to help subsidize the costs of this bridge, but. You know, time is certainly of the essence to try to get this accomplished sooner rather than later.
Yeah. Yeah, like I say, just from my perspective, as I look back, we received the grant for the Fowler Street Bridge. And then we immediately thereafter, we went to town meeting and asked for the construction and engineering money to finish the project. So. You know, I, I, to me, it's putting the buggy before the horse. Uh, you know, in my years in town government, which is, you know, not. Is, whatever, however long it's been now, eight to ten years. This is the third bridge we've had to address. You know, we addressed the bridge down by Nimuck Rod and Gun Club. Uh, the Fowler Street Bridge and now this bridge. So. You know, for the. Taxpayer, you know, myself, my neighbors, we live on the outskirts of town, never drive over any of these bridges. It's an awful lot to keep asking the taxpayer. I understand it's a uh certainly a, a hazard or to some degree. But um, you know, I've traveled over bridges and a lot were shaped in that one.
Through the chair, if I may, the, the only, the only thing that I want to add to this conversation is. Um, the alternative. And the alternative is to consider closing. It's the same alternative we all talked about when we talked about Fowler Bridge. We can fix it or we can eventually have to close it. And I have seen bridges closed before. Wouldn't be the first time in my career that a bridge closed. Just not one in the center of town. Um, that connects the middle of town to a business. I've not seen that done before, but. That's, that's all I'm stating is that um. Let's, let's put it in perspec, another perspective. What happens if we're, we, we find that we're unsuccessful, which I doubt it, but let's, let's pretend I'm unsuccessful getting the grant. We're not going to replace the bridge?
Um, if, if, if I may, uh, Maureen?
Yes.
Um. You know, I. To me, this is just uh, um. Just a no-brainer. I mean, th- this is a bridge in the center of town, right? Like, this isn't Fowler Street. Um, you know, th- this, this is a primary. A- access egress to the center of town, to Mendon, to um, um, our schools. The buses go over this every day. I mean, i- it's. We, we can't risk this bridge being closed. It's going to be enough of an inconvenience just putting Jersey barriers on it and, and narrowing it. Um, so I, I, I can't, I can't. Uh, see any reason that we wouldn't put this forward, given the, the circumstances, the location, the condition of the bridge. We're not bridge engineers. If the state says it needs to be repaired, then it needs to be repaired. It's not for me to say it doesn't. Uh, look like it's in bad condition. Like it, that, that's, we have no basis on which to, to say that there's engineers that do these things. So. You know, I, I trust the engineer's recommendations around. Uh, the state of the bridge and, and the need for whatever repairs need to be made. And I think that we need to commit ourselves to getting that work done. Uh, given its location, we want to support small business. I know. Uh, every member of this board certainly supports small business in town. We want to get more of that. I'm not sure allowing a bridge to be closed right next to a small business. Um, and close off their, their parking from, from the actual uh, uh, business. I- is really going to send a welcoming signal to, to something that we're really trying to promote in town, which is, which is businesses to come here. So. I, I would support getting this in the spring.
I would agree with you, Brett. And the longer we push it out, the more expensive it gets.
That's all I have for that article. Any other questions for that article? That's all I have for that article. Any other questions for that article? Moving on to the water division, uh this year's water division capital is five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come solely out of retained earnings. There's no borrowing here. It's not affecting the tax rate. Um, there is healthy retained earnings in both of our enterprise accounts. Uh, we try to maintain them healthy, looking at our long-term capital plan and anticipating some of the big expenses we have coming down the road. We may actually have to borrow in, in the next year or so for some of the wastewater um upgrades that we are going to be mandated to make. And Kenny and I are going and the town manager will be discussing that and the merit behind that, how that can save the town money and use retained earnings to pay the note to try to make that uh more palatable. So the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is to um to upgrade our water, our two water tanks. As you know, we have Pratt Hill and we have Pearl Street Water Tanks. These two tanks are not at the same elevations. I don't know how that happened, but it happened. So you could never fill one without overflowing the other. In addition to that, our entire water system is one pressure system. So and we've had this discussion before and I know the board is familiar with this. We have to be careful about how much water we put in these tanks. Because the lower elevations like Depot Road and that area around the railroad station and whatnot um has some AC lines and will just blow the lines right out of the ground. As it is, most of the homes down there have pressure reducing valves on some of their apparatus in the house, just so it doesn't damage it. By, to maintain that pressure, we can't fill those tanks by hundreds of thousands of gallons. Um, and when we were doing our study with Ty and Bond and doing our comprehensive assessment of everything, one of the other things that we came to our attention was the railroad and some of the upgrades the railroad did, they put a very large fire suppression pump in that really pulls our system to the max and running the models and looking at the worst case scenario where the tanks are at their lowest before they're getting ready to turn on and something, Lord forbid, happens at the fire station. When that fire pump comes on and starts demanding the system, how long it takes us, let's pretend it's one o'clock in the morning on a Sunday, how long it takes us to get in and manually get all of our system up and running and trying to replenish? We would not be able to supply them a a very long time of water before we would have some major failures in town. And the difference of being able to fill those tanks is paramount. It makes all the difference in the world, those hundreds of thousands of gallons. This, this is to purchase all the equipment, put the manholes in, the regulating valves, do the permitting. Um, and also the apparatus that would allow both tanks at different elevations to be filled completely and not one overflow. That ti- that solves that problem. And it is part of our capital.
Okay.
And where's the funding for that come from?
Uh, enterprise account.
Retained earnings.
Retained earnings. There is in the water enterprise, there is one million, one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars in retained earnings. We've been building it over the years in anticipation of and with, with the board's guidance, uh you know, this board has made it clear to me and previous boards have made it clear to me. We don't want to keep putting it on the, on the tax rate. We want it to be self-sufficient. So we've been trying to anticipate that. On the wastewater side, we have a three hundred and ten thousand dollar um capital request at twofold. One of it is to replace at the wastewater treatment plant, we have a very old generator that runs the entire plant. It's one of the few plants I've been to that doesn't have redundancy. Those, most of the plants that I've been to actually have more than one generator. Or they have one main generator and then a portable that can go to the DPW facility, Town Hall, your wastewater treatment and and augment that power if one of your generators goes down. So this, this generator was slated, identified in the wastewater comprehensive analysis and the capital plan is needing to be replaced. It's getting up there in years, starting to acquire a lot of maintenance. And so there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that three ten is slated for that. And the remainder of it is slated for um the second half of a contract you're going to see at your next town, at your next selectmen meeting for Ty and Bond to continue the INI. Ty and Bond will ha- has a contract ready and available. Um, we had to wait for DEP's approval of CDM's INI program. Ty and Bond made some changes to it that saved the town thousands of dollars. And going forward, we have a contract for a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. One hundred thousand is already set aside. Fifty-two thousand dollars is in this three hundred and ten. Any questions?
No. Uh, just going back to the um, the water question. And you said most of the work that's going to be necessary to get those two uh water tanks to the same level. Most of that work's all going to be done down in the Farm Street area. Is that where it is or is it multiple locations in town?
Yeah, it'll be multiple locations, Steve. A lot of it will be done right at the tanks. They'll, they'll have to put pits in uh with pressure reducing valves that monitor, have alarms on them that talk to SCADA and control the pressure, leaving those tanks based on where they are at the beginning of a fill and the end of a fill.
I see. Okay.
I think I've taken up enough of your time.
Very good, Dennis.
Thanks very much. Personnel for water, you have a superintendent and you have five full-time uh cross-trained water wastewater operators. And then in Parks Department, you have a Parks Forestry Cemetery Foreman and a full-time laborer and now a second full-time laborer.
Okay, great. Got it.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Just a quick word of of recognition and thanks, Dennis. The roads have been looking great. The potholes are getting filled in. The, the new paving's looking awesome. Um, always great work. Thank you.
I thought you were going to hit me up for snow and ice.
No, wait a minute. Now, hold on a second. I got to complain. I gotta complain.
Okay.
Pleasant Street is horrible.
It is.
People have been chirping about Pleasant Street. Um, we, we gotta do something about Pleasant. Obviously, the first half of Pleasant.
The last time we did Pleasant was through a tip and it was a long time ago. And then there was a, somewhere around two thousand and twelve or thirteen, I think it was, there was a microchip put on, or micros uh level put on it, which is a really thin level. We tend to stay away from that because that doesn't just give you a pothole. It flakes only, you know, a half an inch thick, so you can't fill it with asphalt. But it flakes in various locations and the road becomes the surface of the moon in no time. Yes, that road needs serious attention.
It's uh, it's pretty bad. It's to the point, most people that are listening probably know I'm in the towing business and I can't use one of my trucks, I can't take down that road. I have to go down one forty, take a left on Menden Street and then continue down Pleasant.
The problem right now is, as you know, Steve, that we're at that time of year where we're having freezing nights and thawing days and moisture in between, popping out everything we're doing. So everything we put in the ground comes right back out again.
Frost heaves are horrible. It's just the time of year. Not much you can do. The joys of living in New England, right?
For sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Dennis. Well, I think you're up, Kelly.
Okay, thank you to the board for letting me um present the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. Um, as you might be aware, my responsibilities include elections, town clerk, registrar rotors, technology and public buildings. Um, so I think I'm your last but department budget presentation, so um feel free to ask me any questions and I um hope to get this through very smoothly for you. Um, the increase to the budget is a one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine uh dollar budget or twenty-nine percent increase over fiscal year twenty-two. Um, and um based on on my narrative, I hope you had the opportunity to read that. Um, there's a lot of contributing factors to that increase. One is the two percent cola, as well as the step increases for three, for three employees. Um, again, we do have goals assigned, so those are not automatic. It's when people actually meet their goals. Um, the first major increase is due to the technology increase. Uh, technology contract with the IT vendor is up on um June thirtieth. And in March, no, not in March, I think it was November, I asked him to send me some budgetary numbers so I would know what we were dealing with. And he informed me that it would go from fif- sixty-four, sixty-four hundred dollars a month to eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars a month. So it was going to more than double. So in that time, um we've been working, the, the technology committee has been helpful. Our town, town manager has been helpful. We reached out to Menden Upton Regional School District. Um, they have a, they have a couple IT directors over there. Um, and they actually need some assistance for day-to-day operations. So we're looking to do some shared services with them. Um, ho- they're going to hire a, a um, a tech and we can get them twenty hours a week. And that will get, right now, our tech comes to Upton five hours a week, so that gives us fifteen more hours every week. Um, so we do have to do, um, so that will be some paying Menden Upton some of that money. And at the same time, we will have to pay some money for some monitoring of twenty-four seven, mostly due to public safety. Um, because we don't currently don't have that at this point. So the increase to the technology, I'm budgeting sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I just got a notice that I had bad quality, so I wanted to make sure. Um, so
I'm sorry, that's, that's an increase up sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars? That's the year-over-year increase, okay. Okay, I thought we were on a multi-year contract with this particular vendor for IT service.
It was. It was a three-year co- uh, three-year contract and it's ending on June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. So we would have to sign a new contract at this point. Um, so instead of going with double the price, we've, we've worked with Menden Upton to lower that, that, to lower the increase. I know it's an increase. I, there's, there's not much, but um, I heard this phrase that IT is the fourth utility. Just like we have to pay for gas, electricity and um all the other, yeah, cable, all the other utilities. IT with cybersecurity is our fourth utility. It's an expense. Unfortunately, we, we need to, we need to expand and, and protect our network. Um, part of that increase as well, uh selectmen um Italian is data accounting system. We decided this year to move the, the data software that we have, where the cost and the maintenance for that is being moved into the technology budget, budget and out of the finance department budget. Um, and that's mostly to reflect that it's an IT service and not so much an accounting service because it's software. Um, and part of that cost is we're going to be moving to a cloud product. Um, and that will help us save on some server expenses um as we move forward in the future. And it will be cloud related, so people can sign on and not have to sign into the um server in order to access our uh accounting system. And lastly, it's the um, the cost of the um HR accrual tracking system that we put in place about four years ago or two years ago, now that I say that. Um, the cost for that is included as well. The, the other part of the hundred and seventeen thousand dollar increase is twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for the build um for public building and uh Janice from the Council on Aging kind of took a little bit of my steam away on that one. Um, that we, we are anticipating that the new community center will come online um in January. So we're budgeting six months of utilities for that. Um, based on the um OPM and the HVAC contractor um or consultant for the building, they estimated out the utilities for the new center will be forty thousand dollars a year. So twenty thousand dollars um has been budgeted toward the um has been added to the public building for that increase. There's been a minimal charge of increase of four hundred dollars to the town clerk and the registrar budgets because of postage increases and the mailings that we have to do every year. And lastly, there's an increase of fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars in elections and town meetings. And as you, as you probably remember, that we now have three precincts in the town of Upton. So I need additional staff to um, to cover that third precinct. And there's additional maintenance on the voting machine and additional programming fees for that third machine as well. And um also, at the same time, we have three elections in FY twenty-three. It was actually a typo on my narrative. I apologize for that. Um, we have the state primary, which will be held on September sixth. We have the state election, which I believe is November sixth. And then we have our annual town election in May of twenty twenty-three. So that is the increase.
Would we expect to see that, uh, as we usually do, would we expect to see the elections in town meetings? Uh, although it's increasing fifteen thousand, nine hundred this year, would we expect to see that to recede then for, let's say, FY twenty-four?
Correct. It, I, I budget per election. I don't keep it a steady amount, so when we have one election, it, I low it to the cost of, of having one election.
Okay. Thanks.
It's, it's just, this increase is not only is it three elections, we're adding an additional precinct. So the increase is just that much more. Um, are there any questions on the operational budget?
Uh, just a general, general observation. Um, you know, it's when you get into building a new building, you think that it's going to be more efficient co-joining two processes, right? Your library and your council of aging. So you think that your utilities will decrease and you know, building costs, it's a green building and all these other narratives that we've heard about. But when you hear forty thousand dollars in utilities a year to run the building, it's, it's still expensive. You know, it's, it's not getting any cheaper. It's going up. You know, even yeah, and even, you know, even though it's a new building and you think it's going to be green and you think it's going to be efficient, uh, you know, the costs are still rising. Um, moving from two facilities to one facility, which you, you would think that wouldn't be the case.
Well, through the chair person, um, selectmen Italian, hopefully, yeah, we will see some type of reduction at the note mustine costs um that we, that we currently pay, depending on what, what the future of that building is. And has um Janice No Wiki explained, she reduced her budget um to help reflect some of this increase um for the new community center.
Right.
Okay, so there's, I'll move on to articles, if that's okay. Uh, we have article six and that is the revolving account for the cable, um, for the cable advisory, oh, cable, I don't know, I think it's just cable revolving fund or whatever it's called now that I say that out loud. We get, we are flat funding that this year. We're not expecting to have many expenses in that. We do have a very part-time employee, um Paul Norton, that has been doing some work now that Glenn has retired. So there is some, still some salary expenses. Um, so it's still working. Um, we're getting some things going, so we level funded that. Um, that revolving expenditure. Um, article number thirteen is the assessors for ten thousand dollars. I'll put, I'll put my assessors hat on really fast right now. That's our usual ten thousand dollars that we ask for every year in order to prepa- prepare for the certification that's done every five years. That's the first ten thousand dollars um payment toward that, what we estimate to be a fifty thousand dollar increase in our, in our for our certification in five years from now. And lastly, article fourteen is um also has to do with technology. Um, we uh, we got a, we received a quote of sixty thousand dollars to replace the server that we have here at Town Hall. Our server is eight years old. Um, it was purchased at the time that, I believe at the time that we moved out of Town Hall and we locate, relocated temporarily at Holy Angels. Um, and it got moved back to Town Hall, so it's over eight years old. Um, if you talk to any experts in the IT field, they all agree eight years is long past its um lifespan and it's time to replace it. We've, we've had to hold off on some technology um things that we've wanted to do. For example, employees have two different passwords, one for email and one for their workstations. And they cannot be the same because of the age of the server. So I, and um at the same time, this has been on the capital budget to replace the server this fiscal year. So the cost at this point is uh sixty thousand dollars. And unless you have any questions, that's it for me.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, Steve or Brett, any questions?
Uh, no other questions.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
And that's it. That concludes the budget review for those departments. Um, town managers report.
Okay, so I know it's late.
Okay, so I know it's late, uh, so I'll get through this report as quickly as I can. Um, but I just wanted to start off and just let the board know that um, I continue to work with uh, our state delegation and particular Representative Meradian. Um, just last week, um, I submitted an air mock on behalf of the Fire and Police Departments for a hundred thousand dollars total. Uh, fifty thousand dollars for the police department to replace their existing keypad um, entry system with a FOB system to get in and out of the building. All our buildings have a FOB system except for the police department. So if we are, if we do get the award, that will be um, extremely helpful for the police department. And then another fifty thousand dollars to um, replace the data terminal at the Fire EMS department. So certainly, um, I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, Representative, Representative Meradian will be meeting with the Chairman of House Ways and Means next week to advocate on behalf of the town of Upton. Um, moving on, I wanted to let the board know that um, we are planning, I'm working with uh, Chief Bradley to plan for the promotion ceremony for uh, one lieutenant and two of our sergeants uh, that have recently been recommended by Chief Bradley to receive such a pro- promotions. Uh, that date will be March sixteenth uh, at six PM at Town Hall. Um, so I'll stop here just for a second because I'm, we're supposed to meet on March fifteenth uh, as, as a board to review the warrant articles. So I'm asking the question, do we want to um, delay our March fifteenth meeting? And have the promotion ceremony at six PM on the sixteenth? And then once the ceremony is over, we can move to our uh, regular time at seven PM uh, for the board of selectmen meeting.
That sounds fine with me. Is it good with you and uh, Steve and Brett?
Uh, which these, actually the sixteenth, I have, I actually have an event to go to on the sixteenth. Uh, what time is that the, what, what time are they scheduling the um, the award ceremony or the ranks?
Motion ceremony will be at six PM. And, and the reason why it's on that day, Chief Bradley's trying to coordinate with three different families uh, to attend that ceremony. So um, that, it seemed like Wednesday was the best date for, for most of the families involved.
Hmm. That's unfortunate. I, I would really like to be in attendance for that, but I do have an event on the sixteenth. Wednesdays are typically tough for me, but I have something on the sixteenth. I won't be available.
So that, I mean, so given that, we may want to stick with our Tuesday meeting and then just, I mean, I, I certainly will still go on the sixteenth to leave it.
Okay. Uh, so we'll stick to the fifteenth and just have a cer- ceremony on the sixteenth. Okay.
Right.
Um, okay, moving on. So I, I continue to just keep you abreast of the ongoing conversations uh, with the Grafton Upton Railroad uh, and our public safety departments for fire and police uh, and even code. Uh, they continue to try to um, find some resolution on somebody else's standing issues. The railroad uh, really wants to get this expanded facility up and running. Uh, but it's, but we're still, again, working with the state Fire Marshal's Office, have some outstanding issues. So there'll be another meeting this coming Friday, once again, uh, with all uh, those involved. So I'll certainly keep you posted once uh, we have signed off and have approved um, the ex- uh, expansion of the railroad. Um, so moving forward, I would suspect within the next two weeks, I'm hoping by March fifteenth, uh, when we do the article reviews, uh, we will have a cost analysis of the town's EMS structure. As you know, Chief Bradley uh, has assured us all that uh, they will be uh, doing this cost analysis. And they will be presenting this as part of their requests for an ambulance uh, both to the finance committee, capital budget and turn to the board of selectmen. So more to come on that one. Um, the fire department continues to recruit and train call fire fighters. Uh, they've identified five new call fire fighters, uh, that will be going through the onboarding process uh, in the coming weeks. I think Dennis already talked about the potholes uh, and the work that they're doing out there. Uh, given the, you know, the extreme weather we face, um, it's created a lot of problems, not only in Upton, but in every community you drive in, just the potholes are obscene. Uh, so we've continued to work on that. But then I'm happy to report that um, we came to an agreement uh, this morning with the supervisors, uh, DPW Union. Um, so um, we have finalized uh, those negotiations. We will be bringing a uh, collective bargaining agreement uh, for your review, approval and final signature. Uh, certainly uh, prior to the end of this month. Uh, next Friday is the sewer bid opening for Warren Street. Um, and then just to let you folks know that uh, we had submitted a grant uh, through Maya uh, for a workplace wellness grant and Janice had talked about it. Uh, Sandy and Janice were together in submitting that grant. And I'm happy to report that the town was awarded uh, one treadmill and one Peloton bike that will now be at the community center uh, once it's uh, fully operational. So kudos to both Janice and Sandy for pursuing that grant award. And Steve Racketton too, who also assisted on uh, that grant application. Um, moving on to our planning uh, director, uh, he has um, uh, notified me that the town has been awarded alongside of Menden for a technical assistance grant so that they can develop a policy around facade improvements, uh, working with our small businesses. Um, so we're expecting that work to commence in the next month or two. Again, this is a joint venture with the town of Menden. In addition to that, uh, so that's the, that's the drafting of the policy and, you know, how we would implement uh, facade improvement program. But coupled with that, uh, we've applied for redo funds. Uh, it's more of an action grant. Uh, we're upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, again, between Menden and Upton where we could improve uh, three facades in each community using a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, first comes the policy, which will certainly come to the board uh, at some point in the future. And then comes the action money so that we can identify uh, small businesses in our community to assist them with their facade improvements. So again, especially in the town center, you know, it's showing you provide a facelift to some of the businesses uh, here in the town center. Um, and then uh, last, as far as uh, the work that Paul D is doing, he um, wanted to uh, remind me that he is actively pursuing uh, different avenues in which we can update our housing production plan. Uh, housing, housing production plan is a couple of years outdated. Uh, it has to be updated every five years. Um, so he knows how important this is to the board and uh, and, and updating this housing production plan. So certainly there's a dollar attached to, to doing this, you know, hiring consultants and uh, things of that nature. So he's pursuing, pursuing two different grant opportunities in order to get some funds to, to the town so that we could uh, work on that venture. Hopefully no later than summer. I'd like to do it earlier than that, but I think, you know, based upon when the grant applications are due and the awards will be announced, it's probably more like uh, summer of twenty-two before we can kickstart the housing production plan. And last, I just wanted to report that uh, nomination papers are due on March twenty-second. So for those individuals that are at home and listening, um, there are a number of uh, boards and committees that um, have elected officials. And if you're interested in running for any one of those seats, uh, please submit your papers by March twenty-second. Pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening.
Just a quick question, Derek. Um, the facade improvement plan, is that a state grant? There's state grant money available for that and that would be dispersed via Menden Upton?
Uh, yeah, so for the implementation dollars, there's a program called redo, R E D O. Um, and the E and the D stand for economic development. I'm not sure what the other um, pieces add to that acronym. But um, it is uh, state dollars that um, that um, Paul is pursuing. Again, it's a hundred thousand dollars that would be split between both Upton and Menden. Each community would be able to improve three facades uh, per community using those dollars.
Any other discussion?
Uh, closing comments discussion. Um, yeah, I think I just, more or less what I was speaking of earlier. I guess I'll just touch upon that one more time. I just want to make sure that I stay engaged. You know, the weeks pass by relatively quick. Um, we don't talk to each other outside of meetings. Um, I think that, you know, I'd like for the board to make sure that we are using the correct amount of authority and really paying attention to the transition period from Derek to either the hire of a new town manager or an interim or whatever that uh, whatever that timetable looks like. So um, I'll probably fire off an email and just kind of uh, let you know what I feel. Uh, be glad to share it with anybody that wants to know, but again, I'm just concerned about the timeline. I'm concerned and I don't want to be that guy that's not paying attention. I don't want to be that guy in the newspaper or this board be that board in the newspaper that did something that seemed so elementary and we didn't take care of it. So I want to make sure that, you know, if we as a board need to meet, maybe we should talk to KP, maybe we should do something. But just make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's because I don't, again, I don't want to have a problem that we've done something incorrectly. You know, whether it's uh, you know, Derek's departure, um, you know, what that period of time looks like. The overlap where Derek will be working for Upton and perhaps working at Plymouth, is that a conflict of interest? That may be things that we should discuss. You know, I'm not sure, you know, how uh, you know, how beneficial that is, you know. I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now. I just have some concerns, so I think we need to speak about those things.
Okay. We can do that.
And that's all I have.
Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You've got this, Brett. You got one more motion in you.
Make a motion to adjourn. Brett Simon sigh.
Steve Matalian, aye.
Unanimous action. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, all.